All right, we'll call the meeting in order. Thank you, everybody, for showing up today. We've got a good meeting ahead of us. If I may ask for roll call, please.
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardosa.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
If I may invite Pastor Jason Poling from Cornerstone Church of UBS City for your invocation. If we could all stand for that.
Thank you.
And if we can have Mr. Shaw lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards, please.
All right. Well, it's good to be here and good to see you guys in blue, although I was wondering if George asked me to come here to pray because I got all these outstanding parking tickets. I'm starting getting nervous to have all these guys standing. I'm just kidding, I don't have that.
Talk to you afterward.
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, let's go ahead and bow with me as we pray together. "Lord Jesus, we just thank you for this opportunity to come as a community. Lord, we thank you for the for community, the fellowship that we can have together, the camaraderie. Even if we have differences, we're just grateful to be together and do this holy thing that you've called us to do, to make decisions together for the good of this people, this city. We thank you for our leaders, the councilman, the mayor. We thank you for all the workers in the city and for our police and fire and our EMS. There's just so many public workers that we just are so grateful for, for the way in which they serve and sacrifice on a daily basis. And we do pray for their continued protection. Lord, we know this is a difficult era, a dangerous era, and we just also have heavy hearts when we think of what happened in Virginia. And we just lift up the family members that have lost loved ones due to that terrible shooting. And we do pray for protection for all of our employees and for the people here. And we ask, God, that you would bring a unity that only you can bring. We know that only in that holy cross, Lord, where you spilled your blood for us willingly, you didn't have to, or we didn't deserve it, but Jesus came anyway and gave of himself so that we could be set free, set free from our sin, our hatred, set free from our shame and our regrets and our guilt, Lord, so that we could be people who love because you first loved us. So I pray that you'd help us to love you and to love our neighbor as ourself. We pray that you just bring a spirit of unity in this place tonight as decisions are made. Pray for a spirit of unity across this city. Lord, we just are so thankful for the opportunity to be here in this city. And we just pray for you to do amazing things, help us to resolve issues that we've got here, and we just ask that you would do that. Lord, we just, again, lift up these leaders. We are thankful for their willingness to serve in this way. We ask, God, that you would give them wisdom. We think of the Old Testament king who looked to the heavens, looked to you, and said, "We don't know what to do, but our eyes are on you." And that's a good place to be. And so I ask that you give each of the leaders here just that continued spirit of humility to realize that we don't have all the answers, but there's only one who does, and that's you, God. So again, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for the opportunity to even pray here. What a country that we have, where we can have the freedom of religion, expression of religion, even when we disagree, we can all accept one another and love one another. And we just thank you for that opportunity. Thank you for all who made the great sacrifice of their lives in the different conflicts throughout our history as we just celebrate a Memorial Day, for this great opportunity to come and to be unified as a community and to be able to pray together and to love one another as you loved us. We love you and thank you for this time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Pastor Poling. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. All right, Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to report out of a closed session this evening? He didn't hear me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So sorry, coordinating the city manager. There are no items to report, no portable action was taken in closed session. We do have one clarification for Agenda Item, Agenda Item 10. There is a word in paragraph four. We're going to add the word "reject the bid." And we're also going to have the updated agreement. Only a partial copy was included. Those have been provided to City Council and also are available for the public. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Move on to Presentations and Proclamations. This is a good one here. Commander Tom Tappy, where is he? Right in front of me. Come on down, Tom.
His wife?
And your wife also. That's a great idea. And the rest of the council, if you're inclined.
I'm sure you are.
One second. Let's see here. I'll go right here. All right, wow, did you ever think this day would come? It's amazing, isn't it? Time goes by so fast. So this is a very bittersweet event, but I tell you what, he's moving on to the next chapter. Very proud of Tom. I'm gonna read this here for you real quick. "In recognition of your retirement," wow, "from February 26, 1990 to June 6, 2019, Commander Tappy was selected to the position of Sergeant, Police Lieutenant, and eventually Police Commander. Commander Tappy was on the UBS City SWAT team. He has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for his exemplary professional performance, including over 50 letters of appreciation. Commander Tappy was recognized in 1998 as the UBS City Police Department Officer of the Year, and Commander Tappy kept faith with the public as he so honorably served for more than 29 years." Very, very impressive. Good job, Tom. "So now, therefore, be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of UBS City, on behalf of the entire City Council and the citizens we serve, hereby congratulate Commander Tom Tappy on the occasion of his honorable retirement. On today, or excuse me, on June 6, 2019, we wish you a very happy and productive and safe future, both of you and your family. Thank you very much for everything."
Thank you very much. I just want to say what an honor it's been to work for the Police Department, the City of UBS City, all of the, work with all of the other, certainly my colleagues in blue and all of the city employees, Fire Department, everyone that really comes together and makes this city such a great place to work, the leadership here, and also I can't forget my beautiful wife, Holly, and our family and the support that you've given me. So, thank you very much. It's been my honor. Thank you. Very good. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything. Moving on to number two, Gray Avenue School and Albert Powell High School East cigarette presentation. Apparently, we're having a rehearsal right now.
Councilmembers, my name is Tammy Anderson. I'm the Project Director for the Sutter County Tobacco Control Program, and I'm here today with the Club Life youth from Gray Avenue Middle School, as well as some of the students from Albert Powell High School. The advisor for Club Life was unable to be here tonight, so I have been advising the kids and helping them prepare, so I just wanted to take a minute to introduce them. And they're here today because they're concerned about the tobacco industry's use of flavors to hook kids on nicotine. Tobacco companies don't stop at flavors. They also use tech-inspired devices and kid-friendly packaging to lure kids into vaping nicotine. This, along with unprincipled sales practices, gets harmful tobacco products past parents and teachers and straight into the hands of the kids. And we did bring samples today for you to look at and educational packets for you to So 22% of Sutter County kids use tobacco products, and most people who use tobacco started before they turned 18, and most of them started with flavored tobacco. There are 15,500 flavors of tobacco products being sold that cover up the gross taste of tobacco, making it a lot easier for kids to start vaping or smoking. Most teens choose to use flavored e-cigarettes instead of other flavored tobacco because they don't know that e-cigarettes are high in nicotine and are harmful.
Hi, my name is Joanna, and I am a member of Club Life at Gray Avenue Middle School. Most kids are vaping now than ever before. The amount of high school students who vape went up to 78%, and the amount of middle school students who vape went up to 48% in just one year. The amount of vaping is increasing the rate overall tobacco use, which has, which had been going down. Research is showing that kids who wouldn't have smoked regular cigarettes are vaping, and those kids are most likely to use regular cigarettes in the future. A lot of kids think that vaping and other flavors tobacco isn't harmful, so they think it is okay to use them. Most kids say that the Yummy flavor are the biggest reasons why they vape. Kids as young as 10 have been caught vaping at UBS City Elementary Schools.
Ten years old. All right.
Hi, my name is Kayden. I'm a student at Albert Powell High School. The nicotine in these products is poison and harmful to our health. Nicotine changes the teen brain and affects attention, learning, and memory. Nicotine can make things that already stress us out even worse, things like anxiety, mood swings, learning disabilities, impulsiveness, and irritability. But unlike other adolescent phases, changes to the brain from nicotine can be permanent. As a part of a grant from the Superintendent of Schools, students at Albert Powell High School were able to participate in a marketing and media class and develop a video and poster campaign to aim to bring awareness to teens about the cost of vaping. We have brought the videos and posters that we created and started to share with the City Council members. Yeah, we need to talk about the videos. Okay. Okay, yeah, I'll use that. Okay, so essentially, what we wanted to, like, our goal was to get across is that vaping essentially does nothing but harm to you, and it does nothing but bring addiction and harm, like, and death even essentially. Like this one, all right, we see that. Yeah, you see it. And this one is like, like, the vape is sewn into, into her mouth, so like, she's addicted, like, she's almost like pulled into addiction, you know? And yeah, that's... Videos?
Yeah.
Think vaping isn't dangerous? Think again. Serious side effects include... Vaping, what will it cost you?
Exactly.
On average, vaping costs $4,021 a year. Over a 10-year period, vaping costs the user more than $40,000. What would you buy with $40,000? Vaping, what will it cost you?
All right, and that's essentially Albert Powell's campaign for this. Like our experience? Honestly, at first, I was really only in it for the credits, if I'm being brutally honest.[911.00][911.00](LAUGHING) But eventually, but eventually, I basically, like, learned a lot about it. And me, myself, being like a past user of nicotine, I learned a lot, and I'm glad that I stopped before it really affected me. So, yeah. Yeah, and thank you, guys.[931.13][931.13](APPLAUSE)
Hi, my name is Ashley. I am a member of Club Life at Gray Avenue Middle School. The tobacco industry spends millions of dollars each year on marketing in California. Juul, a favorite e-cigarette among kids, made $7 billion in sales in 2018, and they sell more e-cigarettes than any other company. We see ads for things like the Juul and cigarettes at stores in our neighborhoods, on the internet, on TV, and in movies, and in magazines. We see it over all the time, and we notice it more than adults do. We are more likely to see ads for things like tobacco and alcohol than we are for healthy stuff like fruit or water.
Hi, my name is Jarretsey. I am a member of Club Life at Gray Avenue Middle School. In Sutter County, there is one tobacco store for every 1,000 people, and many stores are close to schools. Where we see the ads on our way to school, all of these stores near schools sell flavored tobacco for real cheap, like less than a dollar. A lot of kids say that they can buy tobacco at convenience stores and smoke shops here in town. In 2014, 10% of the stores here in town tried to sell tobacco to kids under the age of 18. 88% of what they're selling to kids were flavored. In order to protect kids from tobacco, and 35 communities in California have rules to stop the sale of tobacco that appeal to kids, and 156 communities have strong tobacco store laws to make sure the clerks are not selling tobacco to kids.
Hi, my name is Louise. I am a member of Club Life at Gray Avenue Middle School. Almost 200 signatures from community members have been collected urging decision-makers to take action to protect kids from flavored tobacco products, including vaping. Almost all adults who were asked would support a law making it harder for you to purchase tobacco. The tobacco industry uses flavors and fancy devices on purpose. They know that as kids, we are more vulnerable to addiction. Vaping has become an epidemic. The Surgeon General said, "We must take action now to protect the health of our nation's young people. This industry should not be allowed to target us with an addiction that could torment us all of our lives. We face enough challenges at this time in our lives. We deserve better. We ask the City Council for your leadership and to encourage you to take action now to keep kids from, kids safe from an industry determined to do us harm." Thank you for having us. Do you have any questions?
Go ahead.
Through the mayor, I am extremely proud of how well all of you've done in your presentation. Can you share with us how long it's taken you to prepare the presentation, the information that you put in the box, and why, why is this so important to you?
Two or three weeks, right? Four? Well, it took us like four weeks, maybe? And I think this is really important to us because, I mean, tobacco is not good for, not good for youth, and like, many, many of them will get really sick and die, and like, we don't want that in our community. That's very, tobacco is very unhealthy, and I think, like, a Juul is two packs of cigarettes, I believe. Yeah.
And the students from Albert Powell, can you explain to us how long it's taken you to develop your campaign?
I think in general, our campaign was about 10 weeks, right? This...
It was over 12 weeks, but 10...
Oh, like 10 classes, about 12 weeks. And to get everything together, like this whole speech and stuff? I couldn't tell you. I, yeah, I just read, I don't know.
But this is through the class that you're taking?
Oh, yeah, 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's how many other students involved in helping with this?
Probably about nine. Yeah, nine, none of the kids in the class.
And what are you gonna do with the campaign that you developed?
Um, I'm pretty sure we're going to be broadcasting the two ads, and we've already started to like, make, like, what was it? Put posters across everywhere. Like, I know right now, we have one inside of our bathroom. I'm not really sure about the other campuses right now, but as it sits right now, I know we have a poster in our bathroom, and currently, we're getting started to put them everywhere. And I think by the start of the next school year, they'll pretty much be around everywhere, like, in our area.
And how can we help you as a City Council?
Honestly, I'm not too sure, because I don't, I'm not like in your position. But if I was in your position, I just try to do my best to maintain the growth, and I mean, like, the growth in this area, I guess. I don't know. And, I don't know. Like, do your best to try to find the shops that, like, literally sell to underage kids. I don't know.
Okay. Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
You probably are aware that we do have an ordinance for any, around any city buildings and city parks, there's no smoking or vaping. We have done that already.
I mean...
So that's good. This is, go ahead.
I'm sorry for interrupting you, but, I mean, if you're a smart kid, you're not gonna be vaping around there. So, I mean, in general, like, that's, that's really cool, and I, I'm pretty sure, like, you probably think that's great, and I do too. But I just started looking for places that kids actually do that stuff. Nope, as kids, right now in our generation, we don't really go to the park. We don't really sit outside of anywhere and just loiter, you know? So, I don't know.
You don't know.
I don't. I don't.
Welcome to our world.[1318.33][1318.33](LAUGHING)
I feel it.
Regardless of the, of the, of the whatnot, it's still very important, the work you're doing, the effort you're doing, and the messaging you're getting out there, because you're right, there's always gonna be somewhere to go hide out, right?
Yes, sir.
This generation that's vaping, our generation, it may have been something else, but if you get the message out, that's really, it comes down to personal choice sometimes. But I commend you and you, your entire group...
Yeah.
...for the work you clearly put into the, to the effort, not to mention the fact that just getting up here and speaking is, can be a big deal. And I appreciate that, and you're all serving as an example to your peers. So that's, that's very good. How many credits did you get? You don't, tell me you don't know.
No, I do. I do know. No, I do know. Originally, originally, I got eight, but since I came up here and spoke, I got two more.
There you go.[1371.86][1371.86](APPLAUSE) All right, we do have one more comment, I believe?
Yeah, through the mayor. "Thank you for your presentation tonight, but I was thinking of something of how we could help, since you said you really don't know." Because I see George standing in the back, and George manages our Facebook page, so, Mr. Mayor, could we ask possibly George to share the videos, if they make it available to us through our social media, to bring more awareness to, to stop vaping?
There you go. There's one more thing. You have something, Rob? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that a couple weeks ago, that's a fantastic presentation, well timed. Good job. We did obtain a grant just two sessions ago for $54,000. So the things that you guys are bringing up, we're hearing what you're saying, the council's hearing what you're saying, we're gonna be doing shoulder taps, compliance checks, and ordinance checks. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Through the mayor, I wanted to also acknowledge Tammy Anderson from Sutter County Health Department and her team, and Carrie Houck for, and Jen Kates, who's a principal from Albert Powell, who is here and the audience is supporting her students, as she always does so well, and having a little bit of insight of the work that the students have been doing. This is a big step forward for them, and I appreciate Chief Landon, you connecting the dots with the current grant that we have, and how potentially these students can be involved in helping if that's an opportunity, because there's so much passion and commitment by them. They, they approached, we had a conversation about this, and they followed through, and I think that this is valuable to see how civic duty can be done in different ways, and really proud of the group of students here with the adults that have been helping them too. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much.[1505.01][1505.01](APPLAUSE) All right, item number three, Sutter Buttes Energy Watch presentation. Looks like we have George and Carrie. George Barlow, Carrie Houck, from Sapphire Group.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Carrie Houck with Sapphire Marketing Group. We are your local partner in executing the Sutter Buttes Energy Watch partnership. So you, as the City of UBS City, are the local government partner, the LGP, and then the City of UBS City is working with Sapphire Marketing Group to do outreach, conduct outreach and education to our local public municipalities, and we thank you for that. So I'd like to briefly introduce my business partner, DeeDee Brady, in the back of the room. She, she's definitely my partner in this and helps execute every aspect of this program. What our purpose is, is to identify long-term energy efficiency projects at local municipalities. There's nine incorporated cities, counties in our region, and we are going in and seeing what projects they have that might be incentivized by PG&E, whether it's a lighting upgrade or participating in a pump replacement project that, say, a pump that doesn't have a variable frequency drive on it. We're helping them replace those pumps. And in those hard-to-reach areas, which part of UBS City, part of the City of UBS City is considered hard-to-reach, the incentives can be up to 25% of the project cost, so it can be significant. I'm gonna point out two projects that we cultivated in the first part of this year. I didn't have a relationship really with the City of Williams yet, and I developed a relationship with them, met with their city manager. He put me in contact with our water plant and the supervisor out there, and they have a pump that provides 2/3 of the water to the City of Williams that is not operating at peak efficiency. And they've already done some testing, and they had already taken some steps toward the advanced pump energy, advanced pump efficiency replacement project through PG&E. So it looks like when they replace that pump, which will be October of this year, they will receive approximately 25% incentive on the cost of the pump replacement and testing. City of Wheatland, Jim Goodwin, who used to be with City of Live Oak, is now out there, and I had a relationship with him from City of Live Oak, found out they have eight pumps that they're going to be replacing, and they're also upgrading all their lights to LEDs. So just having those, I, I look at us like the purveyor of the relationship, and then we connect them with their PG&E customer service rep. Some of the examples of things we do are go into buildings, all the, all the city and county buildings, we measure them, we document the use of that space, and then we can upload that into the Energy Star Portfolio Manager and compare how that your buildings are operating as far as energy efficiency to other buildings of their same size and use throughout the state of California. And that would help us identify opportunities for greater energy efficiency. You can contact us when any equipment needs upgraded, and we also offer, PG&E offers 0% on-bill financing for projects, and that can be up to $4 million. It's a huge amount, and they'll just put it on your power bill, and it'll be 0% interest. And we are offering no-cost training. We offered one in March of this year, and the topic was more legislative than anything, but making sure that our local municipalities are in compliance with AB 32. And we also talked about the importance of having an energy efficiency officer. We also talked about some online tools to help municipalities monitor their energy efficiency. Another thing we can offer is a greenhouse gas inventory, so you will need, as a city, you do have, you are in compliance with AB 32, you're all good, but from there, when, when was the last time a greenhouse gas inventory's been done for the city to make sure that you're helping meet that 15% greenhouse gas reduction that it requires? So we can do that for you. So, uh, we can do that for you. We can get your greenhouse gas inventory done for you this year. And then, one of the other things that we're really encouraging with municipalities is to develop a revolving energy efficiency fund. So, say you engage in a project, uh, say you engaged in a lighting project, uh, and it saved you $5,000 a year. We would ask that you would earmark those, that $5,000 in anticipated savings for your next energy efficiency project, so that you already have some money allocated for it. So, we are encouraging that throughout the region. And then, obviously, we talked about AB 32, but you are in compliance with that, so that is great. So, just a little background for those of you who might not be familiar. AB 32 is the legislation that requires California to reduce its greenhouse gas inventories to 1990s levels, which is approximately 15%. So, every city and county is being asked to try and bring theirs down 15%. And you would be surprised with some of the technology upgrades that we've experienced since this legislation went into place. A lot of municipalities have already reduced that 15%. Every incorporated city and county must develop a, a plan. You have yours, it's called a, a resource efficiency plan. And I believe it's already on your website, and that is another thing we're encouraging, because the state is going in and making sure that municipalities are in compliance. Uh, so they are getting that from your website. Okay, this is the thing that I'm really pushing as well, is just making sure you have an energy efficiency officer here at the city who's in charge of your green team. Is there somebody that might come in during, uh, non-business hours and do an energy audit? See what, what's left on, what, what can we do to just, what can we unplug? What can, uh, what lighting can we replace, et cetera? So, uh, I think that's really important as, uh, as California continues to demand the greater reductions and traditional grid energy independence with it. So, some other things that you can do as a city council are consider ordinances, uh, that are driven by energy neutrality. So, any possible new construction that wants to come into the City of Yuba City, there, maybe their power is generated by the building, whether it's solar or whatever it might be, that they're just completely energy neutral. We do have a Title 24 training coming up, and we are inviting, uh, we'd like to see the building officials, planners, that sort of thing from the city come. Of course, elected officials are always welcome. The last training, uh, I, I thought it was really great, because the municipalities that were here, they all got to share information of what they're doing, uh, surrounding energy efficiency. And I just thought it was a really good conversation, and when we share, we can learn, and we can make greater strides. So, I will let you know, I am meeting with them over the phone next week, so I will let you know the date and time of the next training. And this is just who should attend that training. And now I'm going to turn it over to George.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, council members. Again, my name is George Barlow, administrative analyst here at the city. Uh, what I want to bring forward to you is the financial and accountability report. Uh, this report stems from the December 28th, uh, meeting, where staff was asked to come back, uh, this month and finalize and give this report. I must apologize, in December, uh, it was pulled, uh, uh, from consent, and I didn't have all the information then. Uh, hopefully I have it now, uh, and I hope that this information, uh, fulfills, uh, your questions and your needs. So, um, in LGP, Local Government Partnership, uh, the structure is actually, uh, regulated by CPUC. Uh, and then, the IOUs, like PG&E, uh, actually receive the funds for this type of program. How the funds are actually received, two different ways. Uh, one is a utility users' tax. So, part of that utility users' tax actually goes to things like Sacramento Energy Efficiency Commission, uh, and, uh, funds different programs. For this particular program, uh, you actually have to break down your bill, all rate pairs. Understand the bill, there is what's called an electric public purpose program. Uh, that portion, uh, is a surcharge. So, that surcharge is what actually funds these types of programs. And again, the IOU will receive those funds, distribute those funds, like, through Yuba City as an LGP, to fund Sutter Buttes Energy Watch program. So, the question, uh, back in December was, uh, what occurred in 2017 and 2018? So, what I'd like to do quickly is just break that down for you. Back in 2017, how the funds were allocated and distributed to the LGP. Um, so, allocation was made by PG&E through an award system. Uh, RFA, RFP was actually submitted to PG&E for this process. And during the process, uh, PG&E has broken down, uh, local areas. So, our local area covers the area that, uh, that Carrie was talking about. Um, so, we received in 2017, $150,000. Uh, actually, 30,000 of that was from 2016. It was just a carryover. Uh, usually PG&E, uh, doesn't do that, but, uh, for this year, it was like a two-year cycle. So, they carried over 30,000 from 2016. So, how the allocations actually break down in these contracts is right around 10% to 12% is allocated to administration. That goes directly to the cities involved, the LGPs, uh, which in this case, it was $14,000. And, uh, for a time-of-material allocation, uh, to Sapphire Marketing, 136,000. So, you see the cost breakdown, uh, for the time-of-material, the actual marketing implementation costs, 125,259. And that's really for, uh, all the marketing, uh, to small, uh, medium-sized businesses, SMBs, we call them, for energy efficiency savings. So, that's when we get into the lighting retrofits, uh, uh, the different, uh, energy savings for a company, uh, which then Sapphire Marketing would actually market the program to them and have those communications and talks, uh, with various businesses, business owners. So, allocation was with, to the city for administration was 13,475. I spent right around 208 hours in 2017, so if you calculate that out, it's about $64 an hour that we received from PG&E, uh, for administration costs. So, non-spin was right around 11,265 on that particular contract. Uh, and really, the reason behind that was that, uh, we didn't roll out and get started on the contract until April of 2017. So, how the breakdown is, is, uh, out of the 125,000, 78,040 Sapphire contracted an hourly rate, which is $80 an hour, for the services related to, uh, advisory, really going out to the various businesses, the SMBs, uh, to, uh, talk about the programs, actually work through the programs. So, let's say a company actually wanted a retrofit, a lighting retrofit. Carrie would work through the whole process from beginning to end. And then there's companies called implementers. The implementers actually install the, uh, the lighting retrofits. Uh, so she would actually, uh, work with the installers as well, all the way through the program. So, that was the time consideration. The 47,219 are costs associated with advertising and marketing expense. Those materials that it really costs to advertise, whether it be pamphlets, uh, brochures, uh, the website, uh, building the website, et cetera. 2018 allocation, uh, little bit less allocation in 2018. Uh, total $120,000, uh, 12,000 to administration, and 108,000 allocated to, uh, to time-of-material costs. Actual spend for Sapphire Marketing was 77,288. Uh, and again, that was for marketing, uh, implementation. And then, we spent the 12,000 for, uh, for the administration costs. And again, that's about, uh, 180 hours there of administration time, uh, which averages out about $66 an hour. We had $30,000 non-spent out of the contract. Uh, and really, uh, throughout the year, what PG&E did about halfway is change the structure of the contract, where it was structured more for small, medium-sized businesses. And that's where Sapphire Marketing was directing their, uh, their business to, and how they would market or actually contact. Uh, and it really changed to public agencies. About halfway through 2018, uh, PG&E wanted our LGP to concentrate strictly on public agencies. So, in doing so, it was quite of a change in how we did stuff. We had, actually had to ramp back up in training and requirement and, uh, lost some time. We require in our contract to Sapphire Marketing, they cannot bill over 22 hours a week. So, within that, late starts in, in doing public agencies caused a shortfall there. So, here's the breakdown, 68,800, uh, in, uh, in, uh, time costs, allocated again to SMBs, and I think I went backwards, didn't I? 68,800 for, uh, for the time costs, uh, for consulting SMBs and public sector there. And then, 8,488, because halfway through the year, we started really going out to public agencies, it lessened the cost in how we're driving our information to the public agencies versus small businesses. In 17 and 18, uh, we really worked off of KPIs. So, key performance indicators, based on the, the local area, uh, energy efficiency savings, how much that we actually saved in our local, uh, LGP. Our KPI that PG&E presented to us for the two years totaled, uh, in gross kilowatts, 102, in gross kilowatt-hours, 1,300,000. That's the goals that we needed to achieve, and it's broken down into those two years. Uh, and actually Sapphire Marketing made a total of 94 program referrals. And within those referrals, uh, we saw savings or gross kilowatt, uh, savings of, uh, 101.4 kilowatts and over, uh, 3.8 million kilowatt-hours. Incentives to the actual businesses in these local areas was over $500,000. Now, if we equate that the way that PG&E equates it into a 10-year status, your multimillion-dollar savings in actual, uh, in actual, uh, dollar savings. So, this was just the incentive savings by, by saving those companies actual dollars on products that they may have already or in the slot for purchasing. So, award for 2019 was 66,500, which back in December, council approved. And so, that was broken down, 60,000 to, uh, to Sapphire Marketing on a T and M allocation, and 6,500 for administration. So, as of the end of April, Sapphire Marketing has billed PG&E 16,198, and administration costs 2,0260. Sapphire Marketing does direct bill, so in their billing, it actually comes to me first. I approve the billing, I go through the billing, make sure that, uh, all the information is there. Again, it's based on time of material, so all the time is actually filled out by Sapphire Marketing on everything that they do, and any type of material costs. Currently, what's remaining in this current contract, uh, from May to the end of the year, is 48,041. So, how do we measure? We measure, uh, and through our project management, uh, very similar key performance indicators. Uh, we started this year, and I apologize, that's real small, but, uh, we started this year with PG&E, and PG&E came to us and said, um, here's this bucket of money. You tell us, what are you going to do with it? And how are you going to break this bucket of money down into specific areas? Uh, so actually, the way that we broke it down is, uh, really an identification sector of how are we going to identify these particular agencies? As Carrie mentioned, that there's nine agencies that are, are incorporated in our specific areas. But out of those nine agencies, there's actually 93 facilities that we could go out to, Sapphire Marketing could go out to and actually, uh, market to these energy efficiency programs. So, really, in our identification, we want to identify each one of those 93, make sure that, uh, we boiled it down to, uh, exactly which organizations we would touch on. And I'm sorry, I don't have my large Gantt chart here, but I would show you my large Gantt chart, which actually breaks those down, so we can focus on what targets are we going to achieve? Which rolls back to the KPIs that, uh, that are worked out with Sapphire Marketing. As you see here, uh, we build in the budget for this particular sector, 37,400. We've spent $11,500 in this particular sector. So, we know where the spend is, uh, and where it's, where it's coming from. So, Carrie mentioned training. Training is big this year, because we want to get out to public agencies, and we want to talk about these particular things. Uh, like AB Theory 2, uh, greenhouse gas, make sure that they have a cap, just so that our public agencies are in compliance, uh, come 2020, when it's definitely necessary. So, in our training, we had one training, we have three more trainings set up for this year. Uh, total spend on the budget, 14,500. Uh, and currently through April, we've spent a little over 4,000. So, another thing is policies. Carrie mentioned that, uh, we can go, they can go to an agency that maybe hasn't developed a specific ordinance or policy. And through PG&E, we can help them actually develop those. Uh, whether it might be a cap, a GHG, uh, just to help that agency. And those are funded through PG&E. Another one is, uh, awareness building, uh, really on the marketing end, how we build awareness to public agencies on the various things that we can do. Uh, and one of the things that Sapphire Marketing did this year, right now, is a little, little brochure that, uh, that has been sent out to various agencies, to those specific people, uh, that work on these particular types of things. Any questions?
Through the mayor. Thank you for the, uh, to Carrie and to you, George, for the presentation. Um, I was, this might be directed to our interim city manager, but do we have an energy efficiency officer?
I don't know that we actually have a designated energy efficiency officer. Through our resource, um, efficiency plan, we've identified a matrix of different things that individuals can do for new development, and then looking at city facilities, we've looked at ways that we can implement energy efficiency measures.
Okay, does the plan require a designated person, or can it be delegated as the city has it currently staffed?
No, it doesn't, but, uh, what, what we built and what Carrie was really talking about is best practices. So, in looking across, uh, California, uh, in regards of where SEC is, is coming, uh, on, on working these types of programs, uh, there is- of programs, there is agencies that do have that body of work, unfortunately, or fortunately. It's usually big cities, it's usually large staff, large cities that have those kind of things set up.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Just want to say thank you to both of you. I was the, I'll call it the brainchild of this back in December because it was on the consent, and I asked for it to be pulled. Thank you for presenting it. That answers all the questions that I had concerning the budgetary and how the program works, so I just want to say thank you.
All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, yeah, I appreciate the fact that the request is made, you scheduled it on the timeframe that you were asked, and you clearly answered every single question, and even demonstrated a lot of cost savings for our community. And I think that's really valuable in energy savings. We earlier had just a conversation about how that is important in our personal lives, so as a community, for what we're doing, I think is really valuable as well. So thank you so much.
All right. Question? All right. Thank you very much, both of you. Moving on to number four, we have a public hearing for consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax rule. We have a presentation by Robin Bertagna, our finance director, followed by a public hearing. Welcome, Robin.
Good evening, mayor, and members of the city council. The finance department actively manages the city's utility receivables and pursues delinquent service charges within the limits allowed by state law. We consistently research new tools for successful collections. Our process includes the following efforts. Billing notices, we update billing addresses when we get return mail as quickly as possible, and mail the, forward the billing notice to the new mailing address if we get one. Upon closing of a tenant-occupied property, a dual notice is mailed to the property owner. Transfers, if a customer leaves city service and moves to another address within the city, we will transfer an existing balance to the new service address where they're located. We send up to two demand letters, actually up to three demand letters, excuse me, notifying the customer of unpaid balances and repercussions if the bill is not paid in full. The city uses collection agencies as a last resort. When we use a collection agency, we receive 60 cents on the dollar, with the collection agency receiving 40 cents. And typically, the collection agency's collection efforts are not as good as city staff. When we follow up timely, we're able to get folks to pay us what is owed. And then one of the other options we use is a tax intercept program offered by Franchise Tax Board, where we actually go in and give the Franchise Tax Board a list of who owes us money, and if that individual has a tax refund coming, it is rerouted and sent to City of Yuba City. So the customers on the list tonight that was provided to you, we gave council an updated list that had 20 accounts totaling 26,487.50. They received two notices in the mail to them, and then we had an administrative hearing at the staff level on May 21st here at City Hall. We published the notice twice in the newspaper of tonight's public hearing. We always reach out to our customers and try to get them to respond, so if they can't make the payment in its entirety, we can accept payments, we try to work with them. This is our last effort to collect on these accounts. By leaning them as part of the property tax assessment, we typically receive those payments in two installments each year with the property taxes. With that, I would also like to introduce Katrina Woods. She's our customer service manager. She handles all the city's front operation for utility billing and customer service, does an excellent job, and is very on top of what's going on with our utility accounts. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Through the mayor. Robin, if it looks like we're going to try to collect through the county property tax rules, what happens if they're not paying their property taxes?
Then it does stay as an assessment on the property, and if somebody goes to sell that property, we will collect through escrow because it will show up as being owed as part of the property taxes.
Is there also interest accrued while it sits there?
It's a good question, I believe there is.
Thank you. Other questions?
Through the mayor. Robin, there's a few of these that are, one of them is for $22.27.
That one's been taken care of. The updated list.
You might have seen the wrong list?
I'm not sure what list you're looking at.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't make a slide out of it.
Okay, so the $22.27 has been paid?
Yes, that's been taken care of.
And the $48.52 has been paid?
That one is still there. I believe the county charges us $1.25 per parcel to assess, so even if it's, I hate to say it, only $50, but if it only costs us $1.25 to put it on the rolls, we receive payment that way. We're able to clear the account and get it to a zero balance.
So, and all those attempts that you mentioned have been made with these.
Yes.
Have you, have we ever done a cost analysis, how much it cost us to try to get the money, and what is owed to us if there's a?
This is a very effective tool because it's not an expensive tool. We pay for publishing the notice in the newspaper, and then we pay the county for placing the lien on the property. But especially with the larger ones like the sewer only, they know we're not going to come cut and cap, dig into the roadway and cut and cap the sewer, so.
Yeah, no, I do not disagree at all with the $5,958.175. I think it's just more of those $56 and how we balance some of that.
Yeah. City council could set a threshold and tell us not to proceed with anything under $100 or something like that if you would desire to do so.
I think where there's a cost savings and a cost balance or whatever, that expense, I'm just thinking of it in that terms. What was that?
I was just going to say, once it's on the list.
Why don't you go to the podium? Thank you.
So, once it's on a list, it's on a mail merge, so it would actually be more labor for us to go through and pinpoint and pick people off, because it's a mail merge that comes out of the system for billing, and it just rotates through the process as we generate the letters.
Okay.
So where I get where you're coming from, it's a low dollar amount, it seems kind of silly to lean $50, it becomes more labor-intensive to remove them.
Maybe I just need to learn more how much that labor-intensive time is and the cost behind that.
Yeah.
So if there is a $100 time effort to it, and maybe $100 and above is what we find valuable, but I just found those three bottom ones be more compared, the other ones I have no concern to say. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. There's, yeah, and I apologize, I should have made a slide out of this. There's a total of 20 accounts with a balance of 26,487.50 that's still owing. All of the smaller dollar amounts, the only one that's still under $100 is the $48.52.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any more comment from up the dais? Nope. That being said, we'll go ahead, I will open the public hearing. The public hearing for the consideration of inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on secured tax rule is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no further comment in this issue. I'm closing the public hearing and bring back to council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution for the inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water and wastewater services on the secured tax rule in the same manner as the general taxes, and directing that a lien also be placed on the subject properties.
A second.
And council member Boom Garden and council member Shaw, I would assume that would include the updated list from the finance department with the 20 properties?
Affirmative.
Yes.
Thank you for that. I have a first and second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Robin.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, bid, a chemical bid award presented by Ben Moody. Interim public, excuse me, interim assistant public works director.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Harris, members of the city council. So it's a pretty straightforward item before you tonight. Basically, annually, with the city's wastewater and water treatment processes, we use a variety of chemicals, specialty chemicals that we buy in bulk. And so a couple ways we go to obtain the best prices is we either put out a formal bid, and over the last few years, we've become a member of this Bay Area Chemical Consortium, which basically consolidates a group of 66 agencies where it gives us a little more buying power, where there's, we put all of our quantity together, and then we go out across the area to see what the best prices we could get. And with that consortium, some of the chemicals aren't specifically bid, and so we kind of do a two-step process. We formal bid, where we advertise for bid in April and open in May for those chemicals that aren't part of the consortium, and then with items that were in the consortium, we use those to try to get the best price. And then we had kind of a check price, which was interesting. We bid liquid chlorine, and then we compared that to the Bay Area consortium, and when you looked at that number with the, with tax and delivery, it came out to be the same number. So at least we were kind of, it was kind of a safety check to make sure we were getting a good price with the consortium versus the formal bid. So with that, we went out to bid with the various chemicals, calcium hydroxide, liquid oxygen, activated carbon, quite a few mixture of different chemicals. This basically equates to about $960,000 a year to the annual operating budget. This is programmed in our budget annually to handle with a breakout of 345 approximately thousand to the water treatment plant and 612 to the wastewater treatment plant. And so with that, I'd like to recommend we approve items A and B. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from up here?
No.
Any member of the public care to comment? None. All right. I'll entertain action.
I approve, sorry. I motion to approve, I'm sorry, Ben, you said A and B?
Yes.
Yeah, A and B recommendations as stated by our staff.
Second. I have a second. Motion and second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Passes. Thank you very much, Ben. Moving on to public communication, you're welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited to large groups and are, excuse me, large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express opinions of the group. We have any written requests?
Yes, we have one by Mike Elkins.
All right. Mr. Elkins.
Yes, sir.
I'm all in, up.
Please excuse the dress, I had to come straight from work. I'm here tonight to either ask for recommendation on how to change a city ordinance, or see if we can get a city ordinance changed specifically to do with the mandatory trash pickup. I have a small business in Yuba City. I was at the meeting over on Lassen that Recology put on about the increase in the trash bill due to what they called the collapse in the Chinese market for recycling. They stated that our bills were going to go up an average of 10 to 30%, to which I spoke up and said, that's not true. My garbage bill went up 475%, almost to the penny. It's been a strong fight with them because I was told that I had to have the recycling, that I didn't have the option to get rid of it. I don't have an answer. I'm looking for help because this is getting out of control. I personally believe, and I don't know how to go about it, but I'm willing to get involved. We need another option for refuge pickup. Personal opinion, Recology is out of control. The place is a mess, they don't have enough people, and it appears from an outsider standpoint that they're doing what they can to maximize their profit at the cost of our services. As a business, we're constantly being given new rules and regulations. It's being pushed down our throat. I can literally buy a trailer, stack up my garbage for a month, take it out to the dump, and pay less money than what my garbage bill is each month. And I'm not the only one. I've got several acquaintances that have businesses in Yuba City. Everybody is shutting down their garbage to the bare minimum because these costs are just out of control. That's, that's the only way to put it. Like I said, I don't have answers. I've never dealt with this before, but I'm being forced to now, so I'm looking for guidance or recommendations. And like I said, I'm absolutely willing to get involved because we got to do something. This is just, I mean, it's astronomical. I can't raise my prices enough to cover costs like these because it'll put me out of business because I won't be competitive. So I don't know how to do it. I'm not up here saying it's got to be done. We need options. And I'm being told that this is the first step. So I don't know what to do. Like I said, I'm looking for help, not financial, not a handout. We got to do something, and if there was another company involved, it would force some competition. Right now, they're a monopoly. They can do whatever they want, and we don't have an option. I wasn't for the proposed dump because it's in my backyard. I wasn't against what they wanted to do, I was against where they want to do it. Competition is good for business. If we had another alternative, Recology would get put in check because we have an option to go somewhere else.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Elkins. I appreciate your comments. You may or may not know, we aren't able to take action tonight because your concern is not agendized, but I will defer to the city attorney, his initial concern was how we go about considering an ordinance change. If you could advise on that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are certain obligations under an existing franchise agreement with regards to provision of services. There would be possible to direct staff to bring that item back on a future agenda item for consideration by the city council if they're inclined to move forward on such a consideration. Many communities do have concerns about not mandating health, or not mandating garbage collection because of health and safety concerns, but it's a policy decision up to the city council if they would like to put this on a future agenda to initiate this, or to just have us report back on the process if you're interested.
All right. Thank you very much. So that would be the next step, if anybody in the council would care to consider the matter further and get with city staff to agendize, request an agenda item. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your commentary, sir. Do we have anybody who'd like to speak who did not submit a written request? All right. So we're going to move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for an individual action. We have items eight and nine on the consent calendar. Go ahead. Just waiting to see if the public had anything. Looks like we might. That's Brian. That's Brian. Never mind. No member from the public? Okay.
Through the mayor, make a motion to approve a consent calendar.
All right.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Very good. Moving on to number 10, general items. Update, bless you. Update access control systems at City Hall, Sutter Animal Services Water Treatment Plant and Wastewater Treatment Facility, presented by Brian.
Good evening, Mayor Harris, members of the council.
Good evening, Mayor Harris, members of the council. Again, my name is Brian Hanson. I'm one of your senior IT analysts for the IT department here. And tonight I'm bringing before you the Vigilon access control upgrade. So the purpose of this program is to update the access control systems at City Hall, Sutter Animal Services, the Water Treatment Plant, and the Wastewater Treatment Facility to the city standard of Vigilon access control system. So just a little background, the current access control systems at City Hall, Sutter Animal Services, Water Treatment Plant, and Wastewater Treatment Facilities are provided by a company called Schlag. You're probably familiar with them for their locksmiths as they are. The software that controls these systems is no longer supported, and the hardware that comprises the systems is being, beginning to fail, and replacements are difficult to find. The system at City Hall was installed in 2007. The Water Treatment Plant and the Wastewater Treatment Plant were both installed in 2008. And the Sutter Animal Services was installed during 2013 during new construction. In 2017, the city standardized on a Vigilon for their access control and for our surveillance video cameras. The Police Department and the Corporation Yard were both updated to the Vigilon access control systems in 2017. So formal request for proposals was developed and advertised according to the city's ordinances, and RFP 1907 was posted on March 14, 2019, and closed on April 12, 2019. Two walkthroughs were held, and four vendors participated in the mandatory walkthrough for the proposal. Only the first walkthrough was mandatory. Of the four vendors, only two proposals were received. And a committee made up of IT staff, including Michael Castaneda, who's here with us as well, evaluated the proposals using the following criteria: cost, compliance with RFP, capability, experience, qualifications, and references. The results of the proposals were follows. Rexmore Group, Inc. of Sacramento, California, came in with a cost of $174,052.36. Precision West Technologies, Inc. of Roseville, California, came in with a cost of $167,086.43. And you'll notice I have an asterisk on there because during the evaluation process, staff found that a piece of the proposal was missing from Precision West. We had, the stands for the gates at the facilities are being upgraded, and they were not able to give us a cost on that proposal. So a notice of non-response bid was sent to Precision West Technologies on May 17, 2019. And staff looked through the proposals, and Rexmore's group's proposal included all items specified in the proposal, and the city has determined that they are the most responsive So our recommendation, and this is a long one, so I'm going to read it, is to adopt a resolution adopting an ACQ Class 1 categorical exemption, awarding a construction contract to Rexmore Group, Inc., and approving an agreement for the 2019 Vigilon access control systems at City Hall, Sutter Animal Services, Water Treatment Plant, and Wastewater Treatment Facility project, including award purchase of equipment and services to update the access control systems at City Hall, Sutter Animal Services, Water Treatment Plant, and Wastewater Treatment Facility to Rexmore Group, Inc. of Sacramento, California, and the amount of $174,052.36 with a 5% contingency with the finding that is in the best interest of the city. That's A. B, authorize the finance director to make appropriate supplemental appropriations of $57,995.88 from the water fund and $9,943.29 from the wastewater fund, unallocated reserves to account 663069201, including related transfers. Now, just a bit more explanation on that. The total fiscal impact, when you add in the 5% contingency, is $182,754.98. So that's what we're asking for tonight. As part of Part B, the allocations that is there already includes that 5%. So if we were to not do the 5% contingency, those numbers would be dropped down just a bit. And just another statement on the contingency. Contingency is only available at the approval of the acting city manager. It's at their discretion, at the staff's recommendation. So it's not something that the vendor will be able to just tap into automatically. They have to come through to us and explain why it's necessary, and we evaluate it and then propose that to the city manager for approval. And with that, I can take any questions.
All right, any questions from the dais? Any member of the public care to comment?
I actually have.
I'm sorry, went too fast. Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. Going back through the material and then looking at the dates again for, we were, put it in and just put the last one in at 13. What is the shelf life of the, the new system? Is it another five years?
It's typically 10 years. 10 years is what we, what we designed the systems around. The problem we're running into is because the software that is controlling it is discontinued, that's where we run into the issue. So although the system at animal control is working properly, and we haven't had any issues there, this is more a precautionary step in to get all the systems on a single system so that we have a single management interface so we aren't dealing with managing access for one facility using one software and another software for another facility.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, I just got my new badge today.
Yes.
Is this going to work in a new system?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yes.
I don't want to get locked out.
No.
I don't know, through the mayor, my picture might be the locked out.
That's way too easy, I'm not going to comment. All right, any member of the public care to comment on that? I mean, the item. All right, so now we'll come back for action from the council, please.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we could ensure that if the council is inclined to adopt this, just a clarification on paragraph four about accepting the bid of Rexmore and using the updated agreement. I think I mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting.
Oh, yes, the change you made, sure.
And the change in language on the resolution as well to?
Yes, on paragraph four.
So the motion, when it is made, we'll have to reflect that commentary there.
Okay, so I motion recommendations A, B addition to the new language addition on the standard agreement. Is that fair enough?
Yes, that's close enough.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second to approve staff's recommendation as amended by city attorney. All those in favor?
Aye.
And oppose? None, passes. Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, number 11, adoption of the city of Uba City's fiscal year 2019, 2020 operating capital budgets and fiscal year 19 and 20 appropriations limit presented by Robin Bertagna.
Good evening again. I'm pleased to be before you tonight to discuss adopting the city's fiscal year 1920 operating budget, capital improvement program budget, and GAN appropriations limit. Tonight's presentation will be focused almost entirely on the city's general fund, which is our biggest operating fund within the city. On May 28, City Council met. We had a budget workshop where we presented extensive charts and graphs related to the city's budget and went through a great deal of detail answering questions and considering alternative paths of action in order to incorporate the needs of the city into a proposed budget. That full presentation is available on the CAFERS and Budgets page of the Finance page of the city's website. After the high-level overview tonight, my focus will be on the policy-level decisions that I am requesting your consideration of that have been outlined in the staff report. For benefit of the public that were not at the budget workshop the other night, I did want to at least include the general fund revenue slides and expenditure slides. This shows you 10 years of actual history, along with the projected fiscal year 19 and the proposed fiscal year 20 revenues for the city. You can see that revenues are anticipated to hit an all-time high in fiscal year 20 proposed budget. That said, this does include a proposed transfer in of $500,000 from the city's Pension Stabilization Trust Fund in order to make an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. With the Pension Benefit Committee being formed, we're not going to take any action on this item at the present time until after it's brought back to council, but it is contained in the proposed budget. So with that said, the actual revenues to the city, not including this transfer in, total about $44.6 million, still our largest revenue for the general fund budget that we've ever had as a city. This is a similar slide for expenditures with 10 years of history, the projected year-end expenditures as submitted by city staff, department heads as part of the budget preparation process, and the proposed budget for fiscal year 20. It's broken down and has salaries and benefits in lighter gold and material supplies and services in a darker gold shade on the screen. The difference in the proposed fiscal year 20 revenues and expenditures represents the current budget surplus of $454,800. I know this slide has a lot of detail. I brought it up again tonight. I know you saw it all, all saw it last week, but I think it's important enough to put up here again. It shows you the historical projections for CalPERS, with the red line being the oldest that came from our June 30, 2014 actuarial reports. The June 30, 2015 projections came in even higher. Those are the blue line here. We were very intimidated by that because it's huge expenditures. Then the June 30, 2016 actuarial reports came out. That's the purple line. And then the June 30, 2017 is the green line even better, still very, very high increases in cost between fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 25. It's projected to grow by 75%. Still extremely significant and very difficult for us to, as a city, to be able to afford. But our projections are updated annually every year when we get the new PERS actuarial reports. They will be out in July or August of this year. As soon as we get them, we start crunching the numbers and updating our projections to see what CalPERS latest and greatest data is. This shows you the historical performance of the city's general fund with revenues in green and expenditures in red. You can see the deficit back in the earlier years, the surplus in more recent years, which is solely attributable to the fact that we had vacant positions. And then projections for the current fiscal year that will end June 30 of 2019 and future year projections. These forecasts do incorporate the PERS increases, and I did want to correct something I said the other night. I detailed and told you the annual increases. Those were on a citywide basis, not just the general fund share. So the general fund share is a little bit smaller. For fiscal year 21, it's about $615,000. For fiscal year 22, $542,000. Fiscal year 23, $428,000, a reduction in fiscal year 24 of $62,000, and then an increase, again, of $278,000 in fiscal year 25. So pretty significant increases. The increase that we built into the projected fiscal year 20 budget was an increase of $778,000 just for the general fund share of CalPERS. A big expenditure to have to build into the budget. So very, very significant, and that will continue for the next three years, and then it will go down just slightly the following year and then pick up again the year after The projections that you see for revenues here are built on the economy continuing to move along like it has been. We know that that at some point will turn and will not continue to be positive like it has been. The revenue projections include a 3% increase in property tax revenues, 2.5% for sales tax, 3% in franchise fees, and 4% in hotel motel surcharge revenues. My point here is that it's going to be very difficult to absorb the PERS increases and other increased costs when revenues take a turn for the negative. So when that does happen, the city will need to reevaluate and react in a positive manner to reevaluate fiscal priorities to avoid deficit spending. Some of the items that are included in this budget, we've got $15,000 included for Downtown Business Association strolls, $15,000 for community contributions, and $10,000 for community events. In the past, community contributions have included contributions to the memorial and museum, the acting company, the playzium, and the Uba Sutter Regional Arts Council. As far as community events, things that the city has sponsored in the past include Happy Landings at Beale Air Force Base, the Salvation Army Kettle Kickoff, Museum Trees and Traditions, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Dinner, Uba Sutter Stand Down, Farm Bureau Spring Fling, the Marysville Stampede, Officer of the Year, and Uba Sutter Farm to Fork Event. Budget resolution items that are requested for council's consideration included within the staff report. There are capital acquisition items that are included in the proposed fiscal year 20 budget that we do not have sufficient funds set aside in our internal service funds. Included where we have shortages, staff is requesting a transfer from the surplus anticipated for this fiscal year ending June 30, 2019 to put the funds into the internal service funds so that they're there and available as of July 1 to fund the purchases that we've included in the budget. The items include $268,800 for technology replacement items, $132,212 for vehicle replacement items. Additionally, the city has set aside impact fees for police and fire for the last three years because we were over expended back when we built the Fire Station 4 and the Fire Admin Building and did the original Police Department expansion. We didn't have sufficient developer impact fee funds within each of those buckets of the overall developer impact fee fund, so they went deficit. When development didn't occur, staff reevaluated and council requested three years ago that we start reimbursing 10% each year from the general fund to the developer impact fee fund to cover those negatives until such time as development picks up and they're able to repay those funds. This would be the fourth year of such a transfer. The other item is a cleanup item. We had a reserve for operations that was a one-time money set aside previously for economic development initiatives back in November of 2015. The only amount that was used was to fund one-time expenditures for the Chamber of Commerce to form the Tourism Business Improvement District that ultimately formed the Uba Sutter Lodging Association. The remaining amount of $317,594 was later earmarked for SAFER Grant match. Since the nine fire employees funded under the SAFER Grant Fund are fully funded within the city's budget as far as expenditures, and 75% of the reimbursement is recorded as revenues, there's no, no need to say, leave this designation set aside in the city's general fund. Therefore, staff is recommending that we roll it into the regular unallocated fund balance. By doing so, it also helps the city maintain its 15% Healthy Cities Reserve Fund based upon the increase in appropriations proposed in this fiscal year's budget. Additionally, as discussed previously, the Water Capital Connection Fee Fund has a $1.8 million deficit cash balance because development hasn't occurred at the level anticipated originally when bonds were sold to make improvements at the water treatment plant back in 2005. The debt service payments were allocated 75% to new development and 25% to existing customers. Due to the decline in development, staff is requesting that we reallocate the historical debt service split to be 50% allocated to new development and 50% to existing customers. The reality is that since development didn't occur, the improvements that were funded are now depreciating and will not benefit future development at the time that the development occurs. The next slide shows you the breakdown of the $5.374 million that we were, that we are requesting to restate and reimburse the Capital Connection Fee Fund that has a deficit position from the Water CIP unallocated fund balance. The Water CIP fund has $5,954,874 available. This transfer would still leave $580,405 in this account, and it gets replenished each year when we close out the books at the end of the fiscal year. Anything in excess of 90 days working capital reserve gets transferred into the unallocated CIP reserve fund, so I'm not too concerned about depleting it down to $580,000 and putting the money back into the Capital Connection Fee Fund to offset the deficit cash there. So lots of moving parts and pieces with that. Does council have questions for me?
I'm assuming probably several. All right, so with that in mind, I'm going to go ahead and skip to public comment and make sure we get that done, and then we'll come back to council for questions and comments. I do have one, do I have, yes, from Rick Jemerson. If anybody else cares to step up, please feel free to queue up behind Rick. If anybody else cares to step up, please feel free to queue up behind Rick.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen, members. I'm Rick Jemerson, resident of Yuba City. Pardon me. I first wanted to be here just to simply say thank you for what you've been doing. I think tonight it was unexpected, but from the December 28th meeting to what took place tonight, asking for clarification and such, and I know you've taken that move on a number of other matters, is really, really responsible of you. And I'm really enjoying seeing that type of change in accountability for all the employees and members that service this community. I appreciate it very much. I didn't have one until a few minutes ago. It sounded like my water rate's going to go up. So I'd like clarity on that, please. But bottom line is I've also appreciated, I've gone over the budget, I've notified a few of you at different times. I've been out of town so much, I've been unable to attend any of the meetings, including last Friday's homeless. But the idea that the budget was looked at this year in such a manner as to actually take a lot of things into consideration that perhaps hadn't been done to the detail before, as much as I appreciate staff and what you've done in the past, I really felt that this was a clear look at what's going on. And noticing on the bar graph where we had the light yellow and the heavy dark color on employment and salaries and such leads right back to a consideration I brought up many times during the last election and other elections prior to. And that is that deficit of where we're going to be with CalPERS and what needs to be changed. We know other communities have done it and done it successfully. And I know you're fresh in, that's one of the reasons I'm saying gee, five, six months in, you're doing a great job, guys. Really, really appreciate it. And the people I visit with and talk to, these are the things that come up. And it's duly noted. So thank you for that. CalPERS is still a big, big item. I'll be happy when you can turn around and seriously tackle it. I know you have a lot on your plate right now. But again, thank you for what you are doing. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Jemerson.
As it relates to the city's water and wastewater rates, we'll be bringing that back. Diana Langley, our interim city manager, I believe will have a presentation for you on June 18th. We've been going back and forth with the rate consultant, and I think we're pretty close to final version at this point. But I didn't want to let this slide on the Water Capital Connection Fee Fund. I won't be here on the 18th. I'll be on vacation. So I did want to include that in the resolution for you to consider tonight as part of the budget adoption process as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Easy on the mister. I'm getting too old for that. I've got three issues I'd like to have you consider when you pass your budget. And I would like to think that the public would be advised as to what the answers should be or will be. First of all, our road repairs. How much money is going to be allocated to road repairs? And do you have the money? Our roads are terrible. I think they're worse than I thought they were. The water and wastewater, from what I know, which isn't very much, but most wastewater and water departments in all cities are moneymakers. It's not, that's good. I think it's wonderful that you can make money someplace. I would like to see the public to be aware of the profit structure that both the wastewater and the water department add to your overall budget, to add to your revenue, I should say. Because I think the public should be aware of the fact that every once in a while, things are good. The last item I have, and I would love the public to be aware of this, is the unfunded liability. The public should be told how much interest you're sending into PERS in the next year. Don't talk about the unfunded liability, only talk about the interest on the unfunded liability. Because the different people that I've spoke to in town, well, by the way, I'll go back on this a little ways. I think I've got 13 different cities, people in 13 different cities that are phoning me up and saying, Phil, what are you doing now? I say, I'm not. My wife said I got to stay away from this stuff. But once again, everybody's got the same problem, the unfunded interest. I would like, when you make your, when you pass your budget, go to the appeal, Democrat, put it in there what these three items are. I think the public got the right to know. I appreciate everything you're doing. I think you're doing a damn good job. I wouldn't have your job. And I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Does any other member of the public care to say anything at all? All right. We'll bring it back to council for questions, comments, and discussion, and eventual action.
Minor more comments after, after any questions are asked by the council.
Questions?
Through the mayor. I do have one, maybe it's, Robin, you can help me. Because one of the other items that we're going to be considering as well is affordable housing new haven funds. Is that part in, in the existing budget in here? Am I, or is that a different funding source?
The affordable housing funds that you'll be considering, I believe, are the city's low, moderate income housing funds that are remaining from the old successor agency for housing for redevelopment.
And that is an existing budget?
It's an existing fund that the city has. It's not actively being used. And there's nothing in the budget for this year for operating or capital that allocates those funds. Total, we have about 985,000, including anticipated interest to be received for this fiscal year.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because I know that that's an upcoming item that we have as well.
Yes, we don't have anything included in this budget to expend those funds.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Comment time.
First, I would like to acknowledge the efforts of Mayor Harris and Councilman Shaw. For those in the audience that don't know, they formed a subcommittee that worked closely with staff. Would also like to acknowledge staff's efforts in the preparation of, of the budget for the workshop that was presented to us. I think that was a deep dive into the budget. That was something that we had requested that they do to get us new council people better acquainted with the budget. And I appreciate the efforts of all those who were involved with that. Also to thank for the workshop. I thought it was very thorough. Hadn't had those, one of those in about 10 years, so it was kind of nice to, to see that again. Thank you, Robin. And again, to the staff, Spencer, Lynn, and all the rest of your team.
You're welcome.
The, the issues that, they're not issues. These are comments from one councilperson. And, and bear with me because they're on a go-forward basis. I'm interested in restoring the training accounts to the departments. I know that those were centralized. I don't know what the motivation was. I understand it was perhaps for some control. But I believe that they should be returned to the departments for those mission-specific training items. And the departments and their staff should be held accountable to manage those accounts rather than pooling them in one large account that the city, city monitors. I know that that's happening incrementally in some departments, but it's a little confusing. And, and I'll get to the reason why I make this request in a minute. I remain very concerned about requests that come from funds from outside organizations to us as they compete for what are, one of our standard goals is, which is the provision of essential services. There is a lot of things that have needs in our community. We had a homeless workshop, tremendous needs there. There are quality of life issues, tremendous needs there. We want to be great community partners, but we still have a primary mission of, of providing essential services to the, to the residents of our city. And it's been my, it's been my understanding, at least for the first five or six months that I've been up here, these things come at us all the time. I appreciate the fact that a lot of them are now being brought to us at the same time as the budget so that we can balance those against these essential needs. Professional development, there are professional development accounts set up in each one of the departments. I really would like to see those be, the funds associated with those be identified and used for professional development. I think over time, they have been used to catch a lot of different things. And those other things aren't necessarily unnecessary, but I think that professional development should be professional development. And those other, other items that get stored in the, in those accounts should be identified separately. And this is the reason why I bring up these requests is transparency is going to be very important, especially as we move through increasingly difficult budget times. If we are truly managing the city's financial resources and, and reporting out to the citizens, we need to make sure that what we're recommending, what we're spending is, is available for the public to, to clearly see, especially if we have to get into a situation where revenue enhancements are going to be considered in the future. With that being said, again, I want to thank you, Robin. I know this was, I hate to say this, but it was, I think this was your last budget for us. Say that a little choked up. I think you've done a fantastic job for the time I've worked with you and, and, and since then. And again, appreciate the finance team for the fine work I believe they've done as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Through the mayor. Robin and the rest of our city staff, thank you guys for all the work that you did, all the department heads. Didn't have much to say earlier for the simple fact that the mayor and myself have lived this process for well over a month. So we really know the numbers inside and out. To answer some of the questions that Mr. Trainer, you know, brought up, there is a lot more need in this community than there is resources. So what we did through the budgetary process is look to where we can balance the needs in a physically responsible way and take care of our citizens. It's not a perfect world. There are certain times that we have to say no to this and yes to that. But it was a very, very thorough process. And I want to thank the mayor and the entire team at the city for walking through it because, Robin, you and I have talked, that we got to know each other much better through this process and understand that we really do think a lot alike. I ask a lot of questions, but it's really trying to drive to the correct answer, the most prudent answer for what's best for our city. And I am very confident in the work that we did, Mr. Mayor. And he's so confident, he left the room. All right. But, but with that, this is going to be a process. And Councilmember Boomgarden, you know, going forward as, as we did with this process, we did make some changes so we could start consolidating some things. And this was year one, year last year, our first year of this new process. And I do look forward to this process year over year because that's what we want to happen with our residents here in the city to where they can look at this budget and they can understand, we're spending this on training, we're spending this on roads. And, you know, it's, it's a thick budget. It's quite perplexing and intimidating if you're not used to dealing with it because it's multiple binders. But at the end of the day, we need to break it down in such a manner that we can relay to the general public that we are spending every dollar possible to take care of them in the most efficient manner necessary, that we're being prudent with the funds that we're entrusted with, and we're not wastefully spending anything. And that's where the transparency comes in. So again, thank you, Robin. Thank you. Thank you, all the department heads, chief. I just want to say thank you. It was a great process, so.
Through the vice mayor. I think one of the things I have to say that I really appreciate the strength and quality of Councilman Shaw and Mayor Harrison willing to work effectively with our executive team and particularly with Robin, Spencer, and Lynn. And also to include our interim city manager because Diana had a strong, she really led the process in allowing for this to occur. Believe it or not, but, you know, three of us were elected and been in office five months. And so five months ago, I asked me where something is in our budgets. I would have absolutely no way to perhaps give you a, a secure, firm answer without having to go to Robin or someone. And this process, even though it was lengthy, it took many hours, but it was really important because the multiple workshops, you know, we brought in opportunities for not just our executive team, but our first-line management team as well to be included in the entire process of understanding how we built the budget for this coming year. And on top of that, doing the workshops that were open to the public, which not physically do you have to be here to learn what's going on with the city because everything, most of the time, is recorded and videotaped and you can see it at any time and go back and reference the things that we've worked through as a council. So as a council, we've done, you know, we, we've really dug in and questioned and, and came to areas where we perhaps at times were not always close to each other in the decision, but we, we always moved towards what's, what's the best for the city and how we move forward. And so I truly appreciate that that's how we've done this as a council, even though, as I said, you know, three of us have been here five months and looking at some difficult decisions. But we are, I, I believe that we're on the right track to find some other really creative ways of strengthening our financial situation. And in hopes of that, that will come in with the new city manager that we're in that process as well. But I just wanted to share the fact that the community is a strong partner in the decisions that we make as council members. This is not taken lightly, and we really appreciate all of the input that we hear, not necessarily just at these meetings, but also at other times in the grocery store, anywhere else in the community. We really appreciate that. So thank you, Sean and Dave, councilmembers, mayor, for all your good work. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir? Nope. Let's bring us to the point of action.
I guess I get to do this. Through the mayor. Make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 operating budget, the proposed all funds budget summary for fiscal year 2019-2020 as attached, adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2019-2020 capital improvement program, project summaries by funding sources as attached to the resolution, and adopt a resolution approving the city's appropriations limit for fiscal year 2019-2020.
Very good.
I'll second.
All right. We have a first and a second. Saw those in favor, please.
Aye.
All right. Oppose. If it passes, thank you, Robin.
Thank you. And thank you both for participating as the council subcommittee. It was a very different process this year, a learning experience for me as well, trying to anticipate what would help you to be able to make decisions as easily as possible. So it was a real pleasure, and I thank you very much.
Will we thank you as well? You definitely put a lot of work to help put together the information as shepherdess through the process, and it was good teamwork, and I really appreciate yours and your staff's help.
Thank you. I couldn't do it without my staff. I've got incredible staff, so.
Yes, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be on to item number 12, Yubus Sutter Lodging Association 2019 Annual Report presented by Darian Gale, Interim Development Services Director. And I have Steve Young down here. I don't think that's Steve Young.
Good evening, Mayor Harris and city council members. This evening, we're back before you related to the Yubus Sutter Lodging Association 2019 Annual Reports. Steve Young is actually, works for Give a Key. is actually, works for Give a Key Hospitality. And they had an issue with one of their other properties, so he's not here this evening. He's the president of the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. But Jacob Young is the vice president. He's filling in and he's with Collins Lake and represents one of the properties in Yuba County. Just a brief background, this item was presented to the council on March 19th and you asked the Lodging Association to bring back some additional information. And this evening, there's really two items. The first is, as required by law, the Lodging Association is required to present an annual report to the city council and the council adopt that and a report on an annual basis. The second issue, which is separate, which is to provide staff direction regarding matching funds. The Lodging Association was established in March of 2017. It is a benefit assessment district set up under the Property and Business Improvement District Law of 1994. It provides market, it is an assessment of 2%. That was a self-assessed assessment, which means that our hotel property owners approached the city after some work that the city and the chamber did with our local lodging partners. And they came forward and approximately two-thirds of them requested moving forward with a business improvement district. So this evening, what you have before you is your annual report, which meets all of the requirements by state law along with a budget. Specifically, that budget does not include any funding as relates to matching dollars from any of the other local jurisdictions, as it's not required to be included in part of their annual report. Also, if you saw on the budget form, the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association is managed by a management plan, which was actually adopted by the city council. And any of their assessments have to be spent in a specific way. 60% goes to sales and marketing, 15%, or up to 15% goes to administration and operations, 10% sports and outdoor recreation, 8% transportation and visitor services, 5% contingency and renewal, and 2% collections. At this time, I'd like to ask Jacob Young to come up and maybe give you a little report on his efforts with Yuba County. And then I can come back and answer any questions related specifically to other requirements by law as relates to business improvement districts and the annual report. Thanks.
Mayor Harrison, councilmembers, thank you for having us back again. Again, sorry for my own entire, I had to jet down from some issues I had at work as well. But it's a pleasure to be with you this evening. And I know last time, we had a couple concerns, one being that the matching request along with the report were kind of on one item. So we've separated those out tonight, as Darren had mentioned. The other one was the city of Yuba City did not want to be the only jurisdiction being behind this effort and being the only one matching. And so I've gone before the Yuba County staff and board of supervisors there to talk to multiple of them. And all seemed very supportive of this effort as well. And so we actually have it on the July 9th agenda to talk in front of them with a very similar request that we're presenting before you tonight. And so I just want to let you know we've continued to march for that effort. And in the last couple of weeks, we've actually launched the YSLA and the Visit Yuba Sutter, you know, marketing campaign. And I know mayor and vice mayor were able to attend that event. So it was great to see you there and be able to see that presentation that we made up to the public. And besides that, if there's any additional questions that you had after looking at further review of our request and our documentations, I'd be happy to answer those as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Through the mayor. I just, Jake, was it?
Mr. Young.
Sorry, yes, I'm Jacob Young, the vice president.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Are you, I'm trying to remember, are you the gentleman that presented the, a few months ago when you came here?
I was one of the board members that was present.
You were present, yeah.
But it was Darren and it was Steve Young, our president, along with Lee Jones of the Harkey House, who came and presented specifically. And I gave additional comment, but I was an attendance, not a presenter.
Got it. Okay. So the revenues are based on the hotels in each of the counties that 2% assessment fee, that's what the projections, correct?
Correct. So it is a regional assessment that the lodgers put on themselves, so it's self-assessed. And that is what makes up our budget to work with. Yes, ma'am.
And so the progress with city and Marysville and County of Sutter, when are you presenting to them?
So I know we've continued to make efforts to have those conversations and move that process forward as well. I know some conversations have been made with Sutter County. I started with Yuba County, since that's where I reside and our business. That's where that could start with you. But then also based off of the size of the funds that, you know, the lodgers and of jurisdictions, we started obviously trying to focus on the most critical ones and then continuing from there. Because four of the six jurisdictions have lodgers in their jurisdictions and two do not, so.
Right, that makes sense. And that's why you came to us first, because we have the largest number.
And we're just the most active lodgers. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, okay. So I mean, I would be nice to know just the dates when you have city, Marysville, and Sutter County, because it sounds like you're, when is Yuba County?
It's going to be July 9th.
Oh, July 9th, okay.
Yeah, that was at the request of the administrator and the board of supervisors to come at that specific meeting, just as they're working on their own budget workshops. They requested they become at that time instead of earlier, so.
Great. Well, really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Question for probably either Darren and/or Robin. So the budget, I believe, is $365,000. So that's what they anticipate that they need, and it's also what they have.
So that anticipates what they believe their revenue will be as relates to a 2% assessment. As relates to tourism needs, it's based upon really, you know, what can they come up with? This will be really their first year of implementing projects, but that 365 is based upon projected revenue.
So projected revenue, then they took that 365, determined where they're going to put it, and came up with 365?
Correct. And then, as I stated, certain percentages have to go, you know, sales, they have to spend 60% on sales and marketing, and they have to spend so much on sports and outdoor recreation. That plan, that's called a management plan, it's good for five years. They're two years into that plan.
And who, so the management plan, is that's binding? And who created that?
So that was put together by the lodging, well, prior to the Lodging Association being established. We contracted with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce worked with the lodging partners and they drafted the management plan. That management plan was then presented to the city council and the city council adopted the management plan.
Okay. And then, so the anticipated, basically, 1% of our 10% is how much again? 120, 125?
$127,460, if I remember exactly.
Can you go look that up exactly, please?
So the city would have revenue in transient occupancy tax, which comes from people that are staying in our local lodging partners of $1,270,000.
Right. And that goes, that's a general.
That's a general fund tax, which that tax is passed, was passed by the people. Back a number of years ago, Bob Harlan and Lee Jones worked with both counties and jurisdictions to increase the TOT tax from 8% to 10%.
All right. And this, the 127 is going to be in addition to what they budgeted for?
Correct. That would be in addition to 365,000. And those dollars would not be required to be spent exactly what's in the management plan. One of the things that we do not have is any type of contractual obligation to do this. If the council did want to match these dollars, one of the directions you could give is what do you want included in that contract? You know, what would you like, you might even give some recommendations of how you'd like to see those dollars spent on something very specific related to marketing, maybe trying to attract, you know, sporting events or certain type of videos. The council could have the discretion, and I'm sure that the YSLA, if you were providing them the money, they would be the best ones to do it because they're now in the tourism business.
Sure. That makes sense.
Through the mayor. Darren, I don't know if you can answer this or not, but there's $127,640, is that correct? Is that the right number? Something like that. Anyway, I guess the question I have is, there's an ask for that, but what is it that they want to spend that on? Rather than give them the money and have them figure out what they want to spend it on, how about they develop what they think they could spend it on? And then once they have the presentations to the other entities, we figure out what we can fund.
I think that's a fair request.
All right.
So I know one of the conversations at the Lodging Association was, you know, the chicken or the egg, which one do you present first? Do you go and put together a plan or do you go talk to them and ask about money? And I'm looking at Jacob, he says that, you know, they can bring that back to the council.
Respectfully to Mr. Young, yeah, that's how it would work for me, is tell us what you want to, tell us what you need, tell us how much it's going to cost, and then we can figure out whether we can help you.
Yeah, and we can definitely come back with, if you want to see specific items, like I said, it would be nice to maybe have a workshop of maybe a subcommittee, because we can hear what the concerns are that you have that you would like to see included in that as well. Because if we came, that didn't match your goals, it'd be really nice to be able to work together and then come at that time as well. So we can definitely be in further communication about that as well. And especially with marketing, I mean, it's all about exposure, you know, gaining that. And so I know we have three council members who went through the whole marketing campaign effort. So obviously, the more resources you have for that, the further you can expand your exposure with that as well. And so through different avenues, so it might be in different forms, it might not be specific things, it might be increasing our marketing efforts, enhancing what we're already doing. But obviously, more media buys you can get with more funding and things like that as well. And so it might be a mixed bag, but we'd definitely be eager to meet with you to make sure it's a mutual benefit to do that as well.
Would also consider for the presentation to develop a plan for less than 127, maybe perhaps in $25,000 to $50,000 increments. I am inclined to shave 50 grand off of that and put it towards negotiations and about 15 to honor a request from our Chamber of Commerce for a sponsorship slash membership, because that way, lodging is one thing, Chamber of Commerce is another, we have to take the big picture into consideration. That's where I'm thinking right now. I think we're at a point of that decision. But in the interest of transparency, I want to let you know that. Sir?
Yeah, through the mayor. Just wanted to commend you, first of all, for the video you guys presented. So if I wasn't able to make the launch over at the Harvest Room, but you guys did present it here. Well done. And I agree with my fellow council member is, you know, kind of wow us. Give us that business plan that we're looking at. You've got your standard budget for the 300-plus, after you figure out what you're going to get from the other municipalities. Put together your dream list over the next several years. Because one council member setting up here, speaking for myself, I'm looking on return on investment, ROI. If we're going to give you $100,000 extra, I want to see that flowing into more tourism, more, you know, people coming to visit our area and how are we going to successfully market that. So I'm looking at my return on investment, because really that's the way I see it, is we're investing the taxpayers' money into you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Through the mayor. One thing is, on this tourism, Yuba City, the hotels in Yuba City, we do reap the most benefits out of all the other jurisdictions, because we have the hotels and the folks come to Yuba City. Darren, can you please answer the question? I know you have it. How much did we receive for, was it the first quarter or for the tourism, the check that they gave to us that night? Can you please let the rest of the council know about that, please?
Yes. So for the most recent quarter, the assessments collected in Yuba City alone was $70,000. So that was for three months, 2%.
So we are getting the bang for our buck. I just wanted to mention that.
So I would be remiss, I looked over here in the audience, throughout this process, we've worked with four different Chamber of Commerce executives. Ricky was actually the chamber executive when we put together the management plan for the Lodging Association. And I want to make sure and recognize her for her efforts in this tourism efforts. Thank you, Ricky.
Wide awake.
All right. Through the mayor, one final comment, and then I'll make a motion here to move it on. Number one, the, I'm comfortable with the motion that I'm going to make because the funds are set aside and earmarked inside of the budget we just passed. They haven't been reallocated anywhere else, so they're already part of the budget. Let me explain the ROI. The ROI is more revenue for our hotels in the area based upon the increased investment. It's not about the tax coming to the city. I think you get it. But that's what we want to see. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the annual report and preliminary budget for the Yuba Sutter Tourism Improvement District for fiscal year 2019 as recommended by the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. And I recommend that we hold off on dispersing the funds until a later date with the matching funds to be determined amount and date.
So the hold off on determining where the 127 will go to?
The 127, 460-ish. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And when will you folks be coming back to us with some information?
And I can bring it before our board. Like I said, depending if we want to do any workshops with any of the council members to collaborate on that. But if you wanted us to just bring it forth with what we feel that would be best utilized towards, we could, you know, whichever meeting mid-year needs the best, it'd probably be about a month or so, that we could work with our marketers as well. We have a board meeting at the end of this month. We meet, you know, towards the end. And so it might be one of the, maybe later July ones as well, because we can also hear back from Yuba County on their direction and be able to come up with a little bit more of an update to you as well. I was just talking to the interim Sutter County Administrator as well. And again, very eager to get on board with this process as well. So the ball's definitely moving. So whatever you feel would be the most beneficial, it could probably be July or August that we could come back to with that, sir.
Okay. Would you like to put this on the, for the?
I just have one comment. Mr. Young, if you can take the opportunity to also be more specific in some of those budget items, it seems pretty, my iPad is on the fritz. So, but there's a line item in there that's pretty vague on each category. Dang it. Program specifics to be determined by marketing plan, $32,900. And every category has it. I'd be interested in seeing a little bit more specifics under that as well. And don't get me wrong, fully support the concept, we just need to make sure that the public's going to get a good ROI. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have a motion?
Sorry, before, there's a second on it and after public comment. Just for my clarification, Councilmember Shaw, so it would be adopting the resolution, and then it would be holding off on the $127,000 component of it until a future meeting when they may be coming back for additional consideration by the council. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
More specific requests for the money, essentially. And thank you for reminding me. Do we have public comment on this item? Yes. Hold on. I want to have public comment before we vote. I should have asked for that first. My bad.
Mayor and councilmembers, I am Ricky Schaefer, and thank you for just a quick moment. I have one quick comment. Just wanted to stand in support of the additional ask that the YSLA is requesting. That was always part of the original plan when this effort was began a number of years ago. And actually, beginning with the city of Yuba City and moving it out to all of the other five jurisdictions that support this. Just know that a part of what the YSLA, whatever they bring back to present to the council members to talk about what this effort specifically regards to that $120,000 will be, that when you're talking about marketing and the potential ROI, many of the ROIs aren't seen for a number of years because they're marketing outside of the community. It's a, whether it's a statewide, national, or international effort, and it takes a cumulative effect aggregately for them to have a return come back. So you may not see that ROI for year two, three, four, five, but it'll have a positive effect. And so very strongly in support of that. I hope that you'll consider their request. And when they are able to come back and to work with you on a more definitive plan, it's important for it to be able to continue its momentum once it's begun. It's very hard to restart a marketing effort once it's lapsed. So please do take them into consideration and keep that good work going. And the community will see it. And just know the taxpayers that we're talking about are actually visitors. They're not community taxpayers. 100% of the money you're receiving that you're reallocating for tourism is coming from tourists. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just to note that once we allocate it, it's the public's money. But thank you very much.
And quick comment, I'd like to make it where they can come back the second meeting of August?
Okay. Well, no. We're waiting for a second now, so it's back up. And so you want to request that we come back on the second?
The second meeting of August for them to?
Is that possible, sir?
I think that'd be enough for your, you get your jurisdictions in, you think, by then?
I am confident now we can get Sutter and I am confident now we can get Sutter and Yuba, we could probably at least present it in front of Marysville. I just had to check with the other board members and our marketers, make sure that we could have everything put together by then. It sounds like timeline that could be doable, but before I commit to specifically the second meeting, I just want to confer with them first, if that's okay.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, Jacob, correct?
Yes, sir.
I left it vague because my anticipation is not to reach an impasse at a third meeting, but give you enough time to where you've met with Marysville, Yuba County, Sutter County, and then you contact us and say, hey, I'd like to be on the first meeting of August or the second meeting of August, but give you the time you need. That's the reason I just left it to be determined. Would that be more apropos for you, sir?
I think that would be good, just to make sure, like you said, it'd be harder to come back and say, we need one more month, so that'd be appreciated.
Thank you.
It's definitely a safe assumption they're going to come back as soon as possible because you like the money sooner than later. All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further public comment before I do another leapfrog? All right. So we have a motion on the floor to adopt the resolution approving, dang it, the annual report and also return back with some further details on how you'd like to spend the 127 460. Correct? And you'll do so as soon as practical. All right, thank you very much. So I have a second on that.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you very much, sir. Moving on to number 13, affordable housing funding request for our HA for a 40-unit development at the corner of Garden Highway and Miles Avenue. Also by Darren.
One down, two to go.
Yes.
I will be very brief, since we've spoken about this a few different times. This is a request from the Regional Housing Authority on a 40-unit development at the corner of Garden Highway and Miles Avenue. The council on, back in February, awarded $400,000 as part of a loan for the New Haven Accord Affordable Housing Project. In your meeting, May 21st, you discussed this at length about the request for additional funding and you wanted to wait until after your, your hearing or your workshop on homelessness that occurred this past Friday. A couple of items, one, in my best robin here, in your low mod housing asset fund, you have $969,455.20. And additionally, you have $200,000 in your homes to family capital maintenance account. So you have approximately 1.16 million in funding that could be used for this project and any other project related to providing housing for the homeless. Two, two quick items. Number one, these funds cannot be used for operational as relates to a shelter, but they can be used for construction. And number two, in order for the grant or the grant applicant to receive a benefit for receiving funding from the local agency, it has to be in a loan. The city council can do this in two ways. You can grant the funds to the Regional Housing Authority and then they would enter into a loan with the developer, or you could enter into a loan directly with, with the developer. I mention that because there was some discussion about, you know, are you truly ever going to see any revenue back as a result of the funding that's being provided? And the answer is likely not. But however, that's how it needs to be structured in order for them to receive credit for their 9% tax credit application to the state. At this time, I'd like, if you want, we can have Gus from the Regional Housing Authority come up and answer any questions, or the council can have a discussion. I do know that we have a number of members in the audience that are here to speak, and I do believe that the interim CIO from Sutter County would like to speak on this item also.
He is here. Any comment or questions from council? What? You want to hear questions first?
Yes, thank you, sir.
All right, so we have three speaker cards, since you're up there, Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council members. Steve Smith and Erm County Administrator, Sutter County, just wanted to give you a brief update. There will be a staff report on next week's agenda for the Sutter County Board of Supervisors to consider with staff recommendation to approve an additional $200,000 from the county CDBG funds towards this project. So that's all I had to say, I just wanted to make sure you're aware of it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Rick Jemerson again. Are you Ms. Butcher? Where? Oh, right there, okay.
Again, Mayor, council members, I thank you for the opportunity. And again, my apologies as I expressed them in the past that I was unable to be in town during last week's meeting, but I've tried to meet with as many people as possible, gathers much information. I'm definitely, and for those of you who don't know, I was homeless for over 14 months. I've lived on the street, I ate off the streets, so don't take this in the wrong context. I'm just simply would like clarity, and I'm sure it may have been covered at the last meeting, but I know this was a, they'd been turned down one time, they're coming back, they need more money, I understand what's going on here. But I've been concerned, and I hear this continually in the conversations I have out in the community of people asking me, how is it that a 40-unit facility is costing $29,000 something dollars per unit? I think the biggest concern at this point in the community from the people that I'm familiar with is just simply, what is it that's costing so much within this building that's coming together somewhere? And I'm not expecting you to give me an answer just right off of here. I know that if I'd have been able to dig deeper someplace or knew where to dig, I would have found out. So it's kind of late to the table, but I'm just letting you know what the concern is from the community, what the actual cost is for this type of facility. Okay? Nothing more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Kimberly Butcher.
Hello, Mayor Harris and the council members, thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Kimberly Butcher and I'm a Yuba County resident. And I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of Yuba County and Sutter County children who are not necessarily able to advocate on their own behalf. But I also want to make one little comment that regarding the $29,000 per unit, which sounds quite affordable compared to the cost of an RV. So I just want to say, I don't know exactly how much, the particulars of the cost of the units, I know constructions are very expensive. I've done some, been part of many projects, but I do know that it doesn't sound that astronomical. For the past eight years, I previously served as the Director of the Child Development Programs for Yuba City Unified School District. These programs serve over 650, 50, 18 months of five-year-old children. Over the years, the programs have enrolled homeless children, meeting their developmental and nutritional needs by day, and sending them back to their cars or the river bottoms at night. It's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking to know that our only assistance to secure housing for these families is to get them added to the waiting list for affordable housing because there is not enough. More affordable housing units is what will remedy the needs of these families and get our children off the streets. Daily from my office in the heart of the Richland Housing Units, I could clearly see that every unit stays full. Nearly all the homeless children we enrolled would at some point not be able to attend our child development programs due to the hardships of homelessness. Typically, these families would leave the area to live with family elsewhere because they were not able to secure housing here. I urge the city of Yuba City to do everything in their power to assist in the addition of 40 affordable housing units through the Regional Housing Authority's efforts. The Regional Housing Authority has a proven track record of continually improving and increasing affordable housing in our counties. Your investment will pay dividends and many children are likely to benefit. Your commitment will increase the Regional Housing Authority's ability to leverage federal dollars and state dollars. Please consider meeting their monetary request and then consider increasing your contribution. I'm confident that the Regional Housing Authority's 40-unit project will be successful, given the dollars necessary, and the city won't have to plan, organize, or execute the project. But clearly, the city can say that they've supported and gave all the money they had earmarked for housing at the city level to support the additional, addition affordable housing in Yuba City. Having learned tonight that the funds for consideration are not part of the general fund, but are actually earmarked for such projects, is very encouraging to me, and I'm very hopeful that Yuba and Sutter County kids will benefit from these projects. I do want to note that recently, there was a city of Huntington Beach that actually was sued for not taking action and providing affordable housing in their city. And more closely, Wheatland was recently criticized for not addressing affordable housing needs. So I encourage you to take this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Butcher. And is it Morgan?
Through the mayor.
Let's get this done, we'll come back.
I have a point of clarification.
About 325?
Yeah, it's $325,000 per unit, not 29,000, just to, just to be clear.
Rick, you okay? You don't have a heart problem, do you?
I was on the train, bro.
Yeah. If it was, if it was that much, we'd be loving it. Okay, Morgan, welcome.
Thank you. So through the mayor, I was going to see if you would indulge me, and I presented, like, I have some little slides that I prepared just with some statistical information, just to kind of look at as I'm kind of going over some of this.
Those dots right there, those lights.
Actually, we don't really like to do this because we don't like through the lights. Oh, no. Okay. If you don't want to, it's totally okay, I can, I can just shoot from the hip.
We want to hear from you.
So I want to first say, I applaud all of your efforts to really become well-informed and educated on the topic of homelessness and the current need in the area. Something that a lot of us as partners in the homeless service delivery network of care have been really working on for many years. And so it's exciting to see everyone coming to the table in partnership on this. So one of the things I think that, you know, when considering the need for housing, and of course, is something we talked about at the workshop, that there are only 40 units of available rental inventory, and I even double-checked that yesterday in Sutter County alone. So it's only 40 units. So this project stands to double that. And while it's not an immediate answer, it's not going to put 40 units of available housing into our community tomorrow, it is one of the only projects that are approved at the Planning Commission level to actually move forward. And, you know, we don't really have anything else in the pipeline. Can I have you move to the, okay, perfect. Okay. So the average annual cost absorbed by jurisdictions, I'm a data and research Nazi, like, I, so I actually researched some journals with supporting information and some very recent studies that are published by authorities that research for HUD, estimated that the national average cost to local jurisdictions as it relates to law enforcement, calls for service, fire, days in jail, emergency services related to ambulance care, emergency room visits, you can see, on and on, $35,578 per person annually of an unsheltered homeless individual. Permanent supportive housing is a new trend that's been included into the continuum of care using a housing-first model, and it's been very successful. Well, now they have actual conclusive research supporting permanent supportive housing. And HUD is not only asking jurisdictions and basically mandating that we include permanent supportive housing into our continuum of care if we want to be competitive for grant funding. But the reason why is because they have actually been able to demonstrate a 35% overall nationwide reduction in chronic homelessness for entities that have included permanent supportive housing into their service delivery model. So I think those numbers really speak volumes as to the need and the actual success of permanent supportive housing. So the total cost to operate permanent supportive housing per person annually is estimated at $12,800. So when I take the numbers from the current pit count for Sutter County, which were 466 respectively for 2019, and I multiply that by 35,578, I get $16,579,348 that we are actually spending on homeless individuals as they impact our systems for fire personnel, law enforcement, vandalism, I mean, on and on and on. So those are costs, hidden costs, that we're actually spending already. So I know that, I mean, all of us, I think, cringe at the fact that, you know, these units are costing about $300,000 per unit. However, the long-term dividends related to this project are just extraordinary. I mean, when you factor in $16 million that Sutter County alone hypothetically is spending as it pertains to each unsheltered homeless individual.
All right, that's, that's very good. You got your time in plus one minute?
Absolutely.
But I want you to know that your message has been received.
So I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And then in addition, I had just counted all of the inquiries I have for housing to Habitat for Humanity because we've had an increased number.
Thank you very much. Gus, did you want to speak? All right, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. You have heard all this information before, but for the benefit of the public, we definitely want to put some information out there in terms of project costs. Yes, it is a 40-unit apartment complex that costing approximately $13 million. Some factors that lead to that are the mandated requirement by all the funding sources to pay prevailing wages. We estimate that about 26% is the premium that we're paying on this project for labor because of prevailing wages. That's roughly $2 million right there, off the top. For the benefit of the public, all the development impact fees, water connection fees, sewer connection fees payable to the city and the county, flood control fees, that's a million, 1.1 million dollars of the 13 million. In addition to that, and this is maybe some information, my fault, that I've never given to the council, is our funding sources require that we capitalize $781,000 off the get-go. So cash on hand from the 13 million that sits in a bank account for any operating reserve needs or any capital reserve needs for the future. So that's, you know, three quarters of a million dollars right there, that, out of the 13 that sits in the, in a bank account for future capital or operating needs. And then additionally that, the land cost that was appraised at $560,000, that's included in the 13 million. So even though the housing authority is leveraging that amount, it's not, it's not a true cost because we're just leveraging that amount of it. But in our funding applications, we have to include it as a cost. And so that, that 560 is part of the total $13 million. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public care to comment? All right, let me bring him back. Discussion, action, comments?
Through the mayor.
Sure.
As I've stated before, for this project, totally support the need for affordable housing in our community. And as I've stated previously, I'm also supportive of the need for temporary housing. With that being said, I would like to revisit, at least discuss amongst us up here, my previous recommendation of a, an amount of $800,000, 600 coming from the low mod housing asset fund, and 200,000 coming from the home-to-families capital and maintenance account. This does leave us some fund balance for what may come to us as temporary housing. I know at the homeless workshop, we heard from the county, some interest from their governing board about something that may occur that could benefit the city as well. I had the opportunity yesterday to, to visit with Habitat for Humanity and the Life Center, attend the homeless workshop. I think that no matter what we do, we still have a large mountain to climb in regards to having enough units within our community to house those folks who need it. This would be a good project if it's successful. My understanding is there's, this is a very competitive process, and even if we fully funded it, our chances of funded it, our chances of it being approved are, I don't know what the percentage is, but it's a very competitive process, and we are up against other metros that are competing for these funds. Anyway, I'll wait for the motion. I just wanted to revisit the one I had made previously.
Sir?
I was gonna second his motion if he's gonna do it.
All right, you have any comment first?
Oh, I have no comments.
Turn the light on. I'm kidding.
It's been a long day, Mr. Mayor.
No, we're good. You're good. Whatever you need.
No, I want to reiterate what Councilmember Boomgarden said. This is a much-needed project here. There's been the perception through the newspaper and through different contacts we had that the city is against this. The city's just being very prudent with the funds that we're entrusted with. And, you know, we have, obviously, from the workshop on Friday, we have a huge, huge problem. And it was led to believe quite a while ago, when the homeless shelter was first presented, that this was going to be the wherewithal to solve everything, and we found out Friday, it's not. It's not really going to solve the problem. With that, Gus, can you come back up to the podium, please, sir? I've had the pleasure of sitting down with you, and we've talked about this project. And I appreciate the stats, I appreciate the numbers that you brought. And even though you're not having to put out the cash for the land, it's still part of the cost.
Correct.
You can't take it back and leave the building there.
Agreed.
Okay. What happens if you go in in July and we don't make this process?
We'll try again in the next round of tax credit applications in March of 2020.
And what happens if we don't get approved in March?
We'll try again in round two of next year.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to a question I asked you setting in my office, sir. What's Plan B?
Plan B is attempt to look for other funding sources to help leverage and bring in the tax credit financing that we need. You know, we're hearing, you know, on the news, you hear it regularly, Governor Newsom is trying to attack this problem with potentially more, more funding, and so we would attempt to, to apply for all these other new funding sources that, that the state of California is looking to, to put out there.
Okay, thank you. To let you know where I struggle with this issue, as you just heard, we could be sitting here a year from today and still not have a project, but still have a need and a much bigger need. And I really struggle with that because we've got to start figuring out solutions. And a solution is not hanging our hat on one dream and one project. Our solution is to attack this on multiple fronts. At the workshop, Supervisor Whitaker threw out the idea of converting possibly the old courthouse. It's an existing building that we could probably renovate for a whole lot less than $13 million. The county already owns the building, you know? Personally, myself, I see much more immediate results in building more 14 forward projects, giving money to Habitat for Humanity, finally giving Casa de Esperanza a new home. That's a major burr in my craw. That helps women and children. And that's where I have the problem of, we've got just a little over a million dollars, more money coming in down the line at some point in the next year, but to tie up literally 100% of our assets on a dream and get nowhere, I really struggle with that. And so while I may seem like I'm harsh sometimes, I see the problem as it being immediate and real, that was made very evidently clear last Friday. It is a problem that we can't keep putting Band-Aids on, and we have to start asking the question to everyone involved, what does a real solution look like? What does real success look like? The mayor summed it up very well when, when he and I have had conversations about this, and if I may share briefly, Mayor, I've already gone on record, so might as well, right?
Depends on what you're gonna say, but go ahead.
You know, talking about success is when you can go down to the river and fish, and there's not homeless camps down there. When we can go shopping, and there's not people resting on doorways. When our children are coming to school and administration doesn't realize that, you know, hey, 10% of our population is homeless. I have a heart of compassion for these guys. They need to be helped. And where I really struggle is hanging all of our money in a project that may never get off the ground. I've done my own research, talked to people that are in this industry, $325,000 a unit is absurd. And I realize a lot of that was caused by, right here at our city, was some engineering that we did, so we'll own it. At the same time, I've asked multiple times, can we soft-engineer this? We've talked about cutting the cottage cheese off this, doing different things, and gosh, you've sat in my office, and it's like, no, we're way beyond it. And yet, if we come back with the project, we're not looking at reengineering it. The solution is, hey, we just get more money from the municipalities or get more grants. My opinion is we've got to start dealing with real solutions to this. My personal opinion, and this is me speaking, is I'm willing to give one more chance. But that's it. At the end of the day, when we go through this round, I'm comfortable with, with my fellow councilmembers' number. If it doesn't make it, we're bringing all that money home because we can work with the county, we can work with RHA, if you guys are willing to entertain something other than where you're at, to find a different location, to find permanent real solutions that we're not sitting here for two to three years to go through a grant process, a tax credit process, and construction. We need answers today. We actually needed answers a few years ago. There are opportunities, and it was made very clear on Friday, you got to be all in, you got to do it. To me, being all in and throwing money into the project that if it doesn't pass in July, we come back around in March, that's not all in. That's holding on to a dream that may never come to fruition. I'm willing to extend it and give them one more shot, Mr. Mayor, but if it doesn't fly, that commitment ends right there, as far as I'm concerned. I would much rather give it to your two organizations, work with the county, let's build some more 14 forwards, let's get with Habitat Humanity, let's get Casa de Esperanza a permanent home bigger than what they had before. Let's start helping the women and children of this city that are homeless, that are battered, that are in need, and let's start fixing the problem now versus waiting two to three years for these freaking grants and tax credits to come through. I'm not a hard-nosed, I'm just a realist. My wife cares very much about this. She goes out and she has bought coats for the homeless during the winter. Just as Rick talked earlier, we've dealt with this in my own personal family with homelessness, with mental illness. It's not like I don't realize what's going on. Trust me, I get it more than any of you would probably really know. I've been standing there when the courts tell someone, I'm getting you out of jail and you can go sleep under a tree. That's not doing anybody a bit of good. I'm tired of talking, I'm tired of dreaming. I'm willing to extend one more, but, Mr. Mayor, if they can't do it, I'm willing to work with the county and these other organizations to start addressing the needs.
Thank you very much. How did I know? Good job.
You're like this. You do that well, Mayor, thank you.
Happy to hear from you.
You know, I, I, thanks, Councilmember Shaw, for the insights of your thoughts and some personal sharing. That was, that was helpful. And knowing that I, I was sharing earlier today that, and I don't remember the year, but I'm just gonna say that sometime 1997. Years ago, we started this conversation with a mayor back then, John Miller, that they pro, there was a proclamation done back then that we asked from the city to help us with homelessness, back in 1997. And, and I have that proclamation in my home. I kind of ran into it again. It was, it was, it was a moment to say, the city has been in this journey for a long time. I mean, a commitment, a long commitment. And, and knowing what Regional Housing Authority does for thousands of community members that live in multiple regions of our areas, how many people do you house? Gus, can you give us that number?
Approximately 10,000 individuals.
So with, and you're correct, Councilmember Shaw, this is, it's a long shot. It is a long shot. I'm used to long shots, as you can tell, because we started in 1997 and even further before that, and haven't given up at this point. So for us to, for the city, you know, to contribute this money that we haven't, truthfully, I believe, and I could be corrected if I'm wrong on this, we haven't really done a whole lot for affordable housing or, you know, in that area for a long, long time. And this, the reason we have this money is because we've done well in saving it, and it's specifically for purposes like this. And I, I think that giving them a fair opportunity for, you know, working towards these tax credits, because when I met with Gus early on, the, the whole tax credit process was very confusing, how, how the applicant works towards competing with other larger jurisdictions. And I have to say, I think, thank you, Gus, and your team, and the Housing Authority Board, for working steadily and consistently towards affordable housing. If you have housed over 10,000 people, and now we're looking at 40 additional units that are costly, I will say it, it's quite expensive, but it's also for individuals with mental health and other disabilities, with families and children. I believe in those kinds of long shots because I've seen it work, I've seen it come around. It doesn't happen always in our own timeframe, and I appreciate you giving them a timeframe, but I think it's a decision for all of us to make together instead of just, you know, one particular decision on that area. I, I really think that we're right in that cuff and that tipping over with now Sutter County really working towards the temporary shelter and having that hopefully launch in September. I applaud that for Sutter County Board of Supervisors working hard on that, and, and Yuba County doing all the work that they've done. But I would like to, if there's no other comment, I could motion a mayor, or what would you like for next to be said?
Comment.
Okay. So I appreciate your, thank you for giving me the time, and, but I would say, let's keep working forward on this and have, hopefully, something that we can all agree that we all built it together, not just one. Thank you.
Mr. Becerra, thank you. I know, had the opportunity to meet with you, and I did, and Ms. Flores as well, to discuss RHA's mission, et cetera. Could you just, again, refresh my memory? Because I know that you guys do take a look at existing structures for rehab. If, if this plan doesn't happen this time, or this application is non-funded, there, it would appear to me that there are some opportunities, without getting into specifics to alert those who may own that property.
Certainly.
But there are some of those opportunities out there. I, I would like to think that you guys are, are taking a look at those as well.
Definitely, Councilmember. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for, for coming back.
That was gonna be my question as well. Yeah. It's definitely important to have your Plan BCD, because, you know, we have 40 units, that's 80-ish people, particularly when the, there's gonna be some children in there, and I really find value in that. How do you put a price on that? And so it's a start. The approach to the homeless issue is multi-pronged, multifaceted, multileveled. This is one of those. So is 14 forwards, so is a homeless shelter, so is, in my opinion, we have a need of a tent city, if you will. And the multiple vacancies, it might fall into the potential development for something similar. I would like to see, hopefully, we can save some money if this, if it does get approved, we can save some money by toning down some of the extras on the project. So, that being said, I'll undertake a motion.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Through the, through the mayor?
Yep.
You're okay with this?
I'm, yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You moved my screen.
Sorry.
Through the mayor, I would like to, I'm not sure if it's a motion, so I'm gonna go to the city attorney. It's more of a recommendation, Shannon?
I think it's a motion.
It's a motion.
You can do a recommendation, you can do a motion. What would you like to accomplish?
Well, I want to, I simply want to give them $800,000. I'd like to give them $800,000, 600,000 of it coming from the low mod, low mod housing asset fund, and 200,000 from the Home to Families Capital and Maintenance Account.
That's a motion right there.
Okay. And I would like to thank Councilman Boomgarden for this great time to say, I'd like to second We've been waiting a long time for this.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve funding for $800,000 as described. Do we have all those in favor?
Nope, through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to amend the motion to be time-certain to where if the project does not get awarded in the next cycle, that the funds become back available for us to reallocate to other projects.
Now, is that automatic, anyway?
No, not apparently, because they got turned down in March, and they are, I think they're currently still on the approval.
I mean, if this 800,000, we allocate for that, they don't get the, they don't get it, we still can do whatever we want.
Right. Is that, that is not correct.
Where are we gonna, where are we gonna put it? If we're, if it's not going to the project?
You can, you can, the motion can specify that that 800,000 is to be used through a certain funding period, and if it's not granted as of the March or whatever date that it is, that the item could come back to the city council for further action.
But we, but if it does not, are we still tied to spending that 800,000?
We're still, if, if it, under the current motion, if it's, if they do not get approved for the project, they can press forward in March, we're still on the hook for the 800, they can go to next July, we're still on. They knew the last project within 30 days, so we'll give them till the end of August. That should be plenty of time for the award process.
We're on the hook forever as long as it's once we allocate it.
Conceivably.
Doesn't start over every time.
You've authored, if approved, you have authorized it basically until you no longer authorize it. But my suggestion is, is if you want a cap or window, specify what that cap or window is, so that there's a clear time period.
Send it. I need to rescind the motion.
If it's okay with Councilmember Cardozo, you could actually amend your motion to be consistent with Councilmember Shaw's suggestion.
I believe we still need to provide direction to Mr. Gale and to the city as to whether, who the loan is made to.
Yes, and that would be a component as well. So that could be either made directly from the city or to the RHA.
And I, so that's why I wanted to rescind it, because I do have a question on, on that particular matter.
Okay. Yes, you can withdraw.
Very well. Very. Mr. Gale? Sorry? So could you just run us through the options again in regards to how to allocate these loan funds?
Absolutely. So the city and council can do it in one of two ways. Either you can grant the money directly to the Regional Housing Authority, or you can direct us to enter into a loan with the developer. Either way, if you, I just want to make sure that's clear and full transparent, if you grant the funds to the Regional Housing Authority, they will now then enter into a loan agreement with the developer, and then they would receive any, any future revenue off of that loan. So those are the two ways, grant it directly to the Regional Housing Authority, or enter into a loan with the, with the developer.
Thoughts?
Yes. Through the councilmember?
Through the mayor.
Question, Darren. What, if we go to, if we get the 800,000 to RHA, the, it doesn't go through, the project does not go through, RHA just keeps it? does not go through, RHA just keeps it?
No, so.
Or are on the hook for it, anyway?
So if you were to dedicate the funds to the Regional Housing Authority, they would then, if they were successful with the project, they would enter into an agreement, a loan, with the developer for that project.
All right.
And, and if you want to put a timetable to it, although there's an application period in July, I would say, make sure that you push this out till at least September, when there's actually notification of if funding's received or not for the project.
Good idea. Okay, so now we're starting fresh? We have a motion?
No, I think.
Or not?
No, you rescinded.
You rescinded it.
You rescinded.
I did, but I think the city attorney had something to say.
Yes, and I, I just wanted to have some clarification, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. If the city is granting the funds to the RDA, or RHA, and I want to confirm with Mr. Gale that this is the case, we can grant it contingent upon the approval of the award, so that it comes back to the city in case it's not awarded, or the city can just do it directly and control the funds.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
That's, that helps a lot. Thank you. All right.
Do you like a motion, though?
Yeah, can you make it for me?
Would you like it to go to the RHA, or would you like the city to do the loan?
RHA.
Can that be part of the whole motion?
Yeah.
So what, what it could be, Councilmember Boomgarden?
I, I've, I've got it, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that the city be authorized to enter into the deferred loan with RHA for up to $800,000, and that is contingent upon the New Haven project being awarded, and I guess that's the only, with a drop dead date of September 30.
And, through the mayor? And just Councilmember Shaw, would that loan be a grant of funds to the RHA, consistent with the intent and purposes of using it for the New Haven project? And the reason why I'm asking is, we're not loaning the money to the RHA, per se, we would be granting them, contingent upon them loaning it to the, loaning it to New Haven.
What you just said, $800,000, RHA, September 30 deadline.
Fantastic, thank you.
Can we, can we amend that to say, upon granted? If it's granted, it doesn't go anywhere, and if it's, if, that's, you don't have to put a date.
What?
If it's granted, it comes, goes to them, and if it's not granted, it comes back. It's clear.
You mean if the project wins?
Correct. If it's awarded or not awarded.
I believe.
I don't think you need to put a September 30th date on it. September 30th, 19, that's, that's what.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
You do, because with the motion, if you say it, you know, if it's granted, then they can go back in March, they can go back next July, it's out there as long as they're petitioning, so that's why there's a date.
True.
Well, I, I just heard our city attorney say something similar to what I just said.
No.
Through the mayor, just so I can clarify, Councilmember Espandola, I'm sorry, I might have been misspoken, I actually suggest having a concrete date in place. What it would be doing, it'd be granting it to the RHA, contingent upon the award by a concrete date. So September 30th would go in, but if, if it wasn't awarded, it would come back to the City Council for consideration. If it was awarded, it would automatically go forward with the project, and the City Council would have no further involvement.
Okay, so then, okay, that's clear. Thank you for muddying it earlier, but making it clear now. Gus, when, when do you project that the notification would happen?
The state usually announces, announces awards for round two, late September, early October. It's typical.
That's what I was thinking. So I was hoping maybe Councilman Shaw would go towards more of October 30th, instead of a September, in case there's a delay. I can make a friendly amendment, I'm told, to October 31st, maybe Halloween, 2019?
Same thing.
Exactly. Would you accept that, Councilman Shaw?
I've got conflicting information over here, because Mr. Gale said typically at September, Gus is saying September, October. Our city attorney, do you know when these are actually? No, he has no.
I can, I can check the calendar for the Tax Credit Allocation Committee to give you a date certain.
Why don't we just go the first of the year?
It's publicized on their website.
October 31st, I'll accept it.
God. So that, do we go with a second now?
Or do you want to go?
I just did that, second.
You want comments now?
Comments now, we're doing motions.
Well, yeah, but I mean, but you can speak before we do the final, correct?
We're done.
So we have a motion to approve $800,000 to RHA, contingent upon winning, or whatever the term is. If they do not, it goes back to the city?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That needs to occur by October 31st of this year?
Yes. And if, you can either vote now, or you can allow additional comments if you prefer.
Okay, so that's our motion. Does any, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Sorry.
Go ahead.
All right. This is a very difficult process. There is lots of folks trying to get money for affordable housing, and one-time shot just doesn't get it. So, I mean, they have to have more than just one chance, I, because there's tons of people trying for this, and we're trying to put our best foot, our best foot forward. Between July 1st of this year through December 31st of this year, we're going to get approximately $250,000 from, I believe it's the AB fund? SB, thank you, not AB, SB, I'm sorry, SB fund. And when we finish up Bridge Street in 2020, we're going to be getting between $600,000 to $800,000. So that's another $1 million in this account. So I, I would like to make an amendment, because we have a first and a second on the motion, and I would like to put a timeline of December 30th, or, well, that'd be a year, that's not, that's not good enough either. I'd like to put July, excuse me, September of 2021, give them three chances, because we're going to have another $1 million put in that fund. It's not like it's going to be empty. We can still help 14 Forward, we can still help Sutter County, it's not like it's, it's not like it's done. It's, it's a tough process, and they're going to go out and try getting money from the state to add to their collection. Everybody else is added, and I would like to, to make, to amend the motion till 2021. Give them a chance, give them three chances. I mean, because it's tough, it's very difficult. We've been dealing with this for how many years, Gus? Five years? Four years we've been working on this? Sir?
Approximately.
Yeah, we've been dealing, and this is, this is very difficult, and, you know, one-time shot, that's it? Then we're back to nowhere, and now we're back to people, veterans, children, living back out there, and like, with the presentation we had before, $16 million a year, when it be, when it could be cut, to helping homeless from the county?
It's my understanding that if the project is not approved by the deadline, the money comes back to us to be used at our option, but that doesn't mean the ship has left the building and they can no longer apply or come back here for more money. They're not dead in the water come October 30th.
But they'll have to come back and ask for more. They have to come back and ask again, come back and ask again.
They will, anyway.
Huh? I know they will, but it's, if it's sitting there, they could just reapply.
So you, you do understand that if it goes beyond October 31st, they can, they can still get the money, they just got to come back and go through the process again?
Correct.
You do, but you, your motion stands?
No.
Or your, your amendment, requested amendment stands?
Yes.
Does anybody want to second that requested amendment? No one does, so we'll go with the first, unless you had a comment, sir?
You have, you've covered it for me.
I did, okay. So, will you do me the favor and, we have the motion on the table, we just need the second?
I already seconded.
And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
No? Okay, so motion carries, thank you very much, $800,000. Number 14, or, excuse me, I have three speaker cards, and they already did that, forgive me. Number 14, Assembly Bill 430, Campfire Housing Assistance Act, by Darren, third in a row. Oh, hold on.
Another speaker card, that's for 14.
Okay, thank you. Dale wants to talk. Don't let me forget.
So this evening, this item before you is a recommendation from staff to authorize the mayor to sign a letter of support on behalf of the City Council regarding Assembly Bill 430, what is called the Campfire Housing Assistance Act, and request the author, and to send a letter requesting the author to amend the bill to include Yuba City in the legislation. In short, this bill is to streamline the development process for residential development in the areas impacted by the campfire. The bill initially impacts communities within Buick County, and in short, Chico's not supportive of this bill, and the author is looking at making an amendment to remove them, and possibly adding additional jurisdictions. We have Assemblymember Gallagher's chief of staff, which we appreciate, we actually spoke with him about a couple of months ago, when this bill was first announced, to see if Yuba City could be included, and they asked us to hold off until it kind of went through some of the committees. The Chamber of Commerce voted to support this bill this morning, most of the California Building Industry Association, Chico Chamber, many of the local chambers have supported this bill. I can answer any questions that you might have. One question I did receive was a question related to tribal consultation. There are two different tribal consultation bills, AB 52 and SB 18. If this bill passed, a project would not be subject to AB 52. AB 52 requires us to reach out to the Native American tribes on a project that triggers any type of CEQA review. In this case, it would be exempt, because the project was already met our current general plan and zoning designations. So I can answer any questions that you might have on the bill, and also, I'm sure Mr. Gallagher's chief of staff could answer any detailed questions you have about the bill, too.
Questions, comments? Any member of the public care to comment? Thank you. Sorry, Dale. Right in front of my face.
Mayor, council members, my name is Dale Liler. I am, I reside at 2261 Drummond Drive, and I'm also the Chair of the Chamber's Governmental Affairs Committee, and just wanted to let you folks know that the chamber did meet this morning and discuss this item, and there was actually very little discussion about this. Normally, they would go back and forth on, on a lot of these issues in terms of support or not for something like this, and realistically, there, there's no contention, this is a no-brainer, and will help us in a time of need. We've been looking for some CEQA exemption help, and this is definitely one way to do it, and so I just wanted to briefly state that, and thank you, and hope you will also be in support of this.
Thank you, Dale. Does anybody else care to speak? Back to council for comment?
Through the mayor. I'd like to make a motion, authorize the mayor to sign letters of support on behalf of the city for Assembly Bill 430, request the author to amend the bill to include Yuba City in the legislation.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very well. Very worthwhile. Number 15, appointments to the City, Yuba City Boards and Commissions. Essentially, Vice Mayor Cardozo and I held interviews with several very squirreled away young people the other day. I wish we had more openings, but the names that we came up with are up there. Very good people, very impressive young people, and I request that we approve the appointments.
I'll second it.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve your recommendations.
Thank you.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor, before there's a vote, I'm sorry.
Need a public comment?
Yes, please, thank you.
No? None? None? All right. Thank you. All right. You have some very good people, I'm very proud of our youth commission, they do a really, really good job. So we're on to number 16, City Council reports, beginning with Councilmember.
Getting there.
Did we didn't vote?
No.
I'm getting tired, man. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Kent City Council reports, Mr. Boomgarden.
Again, I want to just take an opportunity to thank our interim city manager and the, the budget team for the work on the budget, very, very important document, as it establishes the goals, objectives, and, and supporting documents for, for us moving forward. During the last couple of weeks, had various closed sessions, obviously, there were no reportable actions, but participated in those. An excellent budget study session on the 28th of May. Really want to give a lot of kudos to those who participated in the homeless workshop. Thank you, Mr. Smith, too, for your early facilitation of that, and, and for someone who was on the, on the learning trajectory of homeless, I walked away with a much better and much clearer knowledge of what was going on in both sides of the river. I appreciate that very much. Yesterday, had an opportunity to meet with representatives for Habitat for Humanity and the Life Center, and, and the reason I bring this up is, you know, there's a lot of talk about housing, and, and I'm going to make a plug here for Habitat for Humanity, because, and, and this is no disrespect to the Regional Housing Authority, but the Habitat for Humanity has an op, has the opportunity to engage in construction stuff without some of the extra costs that, that burden governmental projects, or governmental sponsored projects. And if you've never been over either to their location over in Marysville, or to the Life Center, which is a coordinated, help me, Grace.
Coordinated.
Coordinated entry, and, and see what they're, what they're trying to do over there, it's, it's pretty impressive. Final thing I want to talk about, because I know it's getting late, I want to give a quote-unquote "official" update on this fireworks effort that, that I'm working on. A number, first and foremost, even though I'm here talking about it, it's been out there that this was a city project. At this particular point in time, it's not a city project, this is something that involves people that are affiliated with the city, but it's nothing that we have actually funded or done anything with. Tonight, or today, one of the biggest hurdles, and this is more for information, was to determine, let me go back, the goal of this fireworks is to, to bring back a community fireworks effort to, to our region. And my goal in doing that is to try to eliminate the, the proliferation of illegal fireworks that is swamping both sides of the river, and by having a community show, it's my firm belief, based upon my 30 years in the fire service and all kinds of illegal fireworks, that if people have something they can come and watch, they will be less likely to go out and buy the illegal stuff and, and shoot that off in the air. I'm happy to, to report that one of the biggest hurdles was trying to find somebody that could actually legally shoot the fireworks, because we're so late into it, most of those shows have already been taken care of. I did find out late this afternoon that that possibility exists. The other possibility that's out there is that we can actually perhaps either shoot those out of the river bottoms, or off of our new Fifth Street Bridge, but the final details haven't been brought together on that. But I am also happy to, to report that there is an effort coming together with folks from both sides of the river, to make this thing happen, and I know that it's being talked about tonight at the Marysville City Council. So I can't tell you that there's actually going to be a show, but I can tell you, an effort's out there to try to make that happen, so. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's been a long two weeks.
All right, thank you. Going to, who's next? Grace.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
As you can tell, maybe we're a little tired. We've had a series of, lots of meetings in the last six days, seven days, I don't know. Short and brief, I attended the Yuba Sutter Arts Council, thoroughly impressed with all the different activities. One of the big things that they're working on is seeking funds for facility improvement, you know, to, will they continue to stay in that location, or looking for other options. As Councilman Boomgarden mentioned, you know, we've been in multiple closed sessions, and we've been in multiple workshops, and every single one of them, I am thankful to our staff, our team, because they step up, every, I kid you not, what we ask, and we're interested, we're trying to figure out or get the right information, they step up, 100%. We have the luxury, or I feel like I have the luxury, to come in, sit down, be prepared and listen, but our team, not just executive team, but our team of everyone that works for, all of us together in, here in the city, they take care of all the details and the work. They actually implement a lot of the things that we are asking and talking about. So I, I'm, thank you for our team, for every, even our IT, Brian, you just did a. you for our team, for every, even our IT, Brian, you just did a testing of our technology and how people using our system and testing that, and how you're trying to improve people to make sure they utilize our emails and, you know, tech, IT information to utilize it correctly. So we, we look like we're the heavy lifters in the room, but the truth is, we get to sit here and have the spotlight on us, but truthfully, without all of you and our team working, we would not be able to accomplish as much as we have accomplished in the last five months. So that is from everyone, from the top to the bottom to the middle, every single one of you has been critical in how we have accomplished what we have so far. So I just want to say thank you so much, and you take good care of us, and I appreciate that, and that's a reflection of how we take care of Uba City and this community. I have come to learn that our community and our team is one of the best in the state, and I'm proud to have learned that even more so in the last few months. And we will have challenges, but I have to say, we are ready, and we have one of the best groups of people to be able to help anything that comes ahead of us in this area, so thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to keep this real brief, because we've been here 12 hours plus already. Lot of meetings, lot of closed sessions. Thank you, staff, thank you fellow council members. More meetings coming up, nothing of significant activity to report out of any of my other committees and such at this time, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Cardozo?
Good, Councilman Shaw. Been another busy two weeks. There was over 25 events, I'm just going to highlight seven of them. I want to start off with a chamber event. We had our grand opening of the Gold Sox. Councilmember Boomgarden, both his sons are playing for the team. We had the grand opening, served the new, new owner running it. It was a great time, had a great turnout. For all of my community things, I went to the senior center for Waffle Wednesday, helped serve some waffles to our seniors, get to know some folks. I was with the Uba City Police Department, our sobriety checkpoint. Come to find out, it was a very busy night, but it's not for drunk driving. The majority of these folks out there are driving without licenses, and that was the, the big thing. So I'm, you know, I'm happy that there isn't people out there, you know, driving under influence. Attended the Public Works Appreciation Day, Public Works Month, week. Attended 100-year anniversary Farm Bureau, the, we were in the parade. Councilmember Shaw and myself were in the parade, and then we were with dinner that night. The mayor and I gave a proclamation for George Inoway, 100 years old in the community, celebrated his 100-year birthday, 165-year celebration of the Bethel Church. So 165 years ago, a slave came to Marysville and started a church, and it's been in existence for 165 years. Attended all the Memorial Day services. Mayor and I were out in Sutter Cemetery, mayor gave a wonderful speech, and that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. As far as my boards and commissions, SECOG down in Sacramento, continue with the Green Means Go effort, which essentially is a way to obtain funding. We are, we are fortunate enough, our community to have a project here for Bridge Street. Dale, who is no longer here, made a very good presentation to the group. A lot of folks that have, I believe there was eight of them, come, came to the courtyard down in Sacramento, they all made their pitch for their respective projects, and then there's developers and other stakeholders in the room who made their rounds to each, each booth, and we gave their pitch for our, for our area. It was quite informative, and he did a really good job. I was privileged enough to speak at the Uba City Charter School commencement ceremonies, both for their eighth grade and 12th grade. Thank you for the invitation, sir. I, let's see, that was already talked about. The Very Special Arts, as a, as a board member of the Uba Sutter Arts volunteered to help out with the Very Special Arts program. It was in Uba County, the last two weeks it was in, at Bu Vista School here in Uba City, which the, the special needs children come, and they have a theme going on this year, it's a circus, or, excuse me, Under the Big Top. And so they did art projects for that, then they come in to arts and crafts projects and games, and my job was to monitor the cornhole beanbag throwing. And I tell you what, it was two hours, very, very well spent. So I was honored to be able to participate in that. Spent a lot of time, as been stated, in several meetings, several discussions, a lot of midnight reading, primarily concerned with our budget and the city manager recruitment and hiring efforts. Proud to attend a council and executive team, team building meeting, was very productive in my, in my opinion. Met with Tammy Anderson, who is here today with the children from the anti-tobacco and vaping project, so she works for the Sutter County Tobacco Prevention and Early Intervention Program, so she gave me a detailed presentation, asked a few questions in anticipation of her presentation here with the kids today. Has been stated also the joint homeless meeting. I think it was a very good and productive meeting, a lot of information. I think it was, it was important for all of us to get around the city and county together, to show that to the community that it is, it is in fact a joint effort. So we got the most contemporary, most up-to-date information, and the next meeting we're going to have is going to be no presentations, next steps and action items only, and so I'm really looking forward to that. That was very informative, I appreciate everything, Steve. Farm Bureau 100 Anniversary, very successful, good community event, and I'm going to make one last plug for our launch, which is the mentorship program the city is participating in. So if anybody, there's several children that attend seventh and eighth grade at Gray Avenue School, been identified by Uba City Unified as at risk, which means they're kind of, because of their home life or whatever other reasons may be going on in their life, they're kind of, on a bubble. They're going to turn left or turn right any minute. We want to make sure they turn right. So if we can find any adults in our community that can spare three hours a month to step up and help guide and support a young person, that would be great. It's called Launch, and it's on our city website. So thank you very much, and that's all I have. Anybody have anything? City, Mr. Attorney, anything? All right.
I do have a public.
All right.
No, I have a public comment.
Oh, you're killing us.
I have to, I have to compliment our mayor. Yes. Attending, attended the Uba Sutter Arts Council, and, you know, we substitute and help each other out. All of us have different assignments, but I heard nothing but great compliments about our mayor, how involved he is, how committed he is, and he is one of those individuals with the Uba Sutter Arts Council, highly regarded because he, he makes the events, he shows up, he's, he's a man who says what he says and he does it, and so I heard great compliments about you, and I, it just made, it warmed my heart, and I thought, that's our mayor.
All right. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. That being said, we will adjourn. Thank you all.